So, um, welcome. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Educate, for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
She's on mute. Donnie, you're still on mute. Okay, just wave and that will be here.
Here, I know, I was having technical difficulties. Thanks.
Sergeant.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
This.
Here.
All right, um, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Thank you so much for joining us remotely. Uh, we're obviously looking forward to being back in person soon. Um, and that's, Rob, do you want to start with the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Board President, Marquess, Board members. Uh, I'm going to keep my report very brief. Uh, we're going to be getting a more thorough update on how our reinstruction plan is going. We're in our second week of having all of our kids back, uh, middle and high school at least, back two days a week, and elementary four days a week, and so you'll hear more about how that's going. Um, I do have an exciting announcement for the board and for the community. This is the first time you'll be hearing this. Boulder Valley School District was recently awarded a $98,000 grant from CDE, um, the Empowering Action for School Improvement Grant, uh, to continue our UVA partnership that we've, uh, started, uh, with Alicia Sanchez and Columbine. Um, they are going to be covering expenses for Cole Elementary School. Uh, Board members, as you can recall, uh, we added Cole, um, at, starting last year, based on some of the data that was coming in, and that work is happening, and so we're very thankful for Colorado Department of Education, uh, for awarding us, uh, that grant, and, uh, um, did a really good job. Our grants team did an amazing job making sure to build the case on, on why to continue some of that work. And so that's just a brief highlight, um, and that is all I have for superintendent's report this evening.
Okay. Um, any questions on the superintendent's report? All right, great, um, great news. So next is our COVID update. Is that correct? Okay. Um, welcome Boulder County Public Health, and thank you for joining us yet again. We really do appreciate all your time.
Thank you, Tina, and thanks, Board members, appreciate it. I will pull up my slides here, bear with me for one second. And if somebody can just let me know when they see those, we can see you. All right, thank you. Um, so what I'm going to do is go through a quick data update, talk a little bit about vaccines, uh, and the variant that we are all paying attention to, and then in addition to that, um, Helene is going to give an update from Broomfield on the data that they're seeing, and then we're focusing a fairly large majority of our update on behavioral health indicators for school-aged kids. So I'm keeping my update a little shorter, and the bottom line here as I go through these is the data is looking good. Um, as, as you all know, this is our indicators. We are, we are still in orange in Boulder County. Um, we, uh, two of the three indicators for us are in green at this point, and the only indicator that's still high is our two-week cumulative incidence rate, um, and this was from this morning, was at 295.3. Um, we are a little less than two weeks where this is about eight days as of the 24th of January, um, that we've been in the orange and have a stable or declining incidence rate. So this is all good news for us. We're headed in the right direction. Um, as you'll hear me talk about, we can't, we can't let up our focus, um, until we have vaccines fully out in our community, um, but our data's headed in the right direction. This is the metro Denver area data. As you can see, Boulder County is in the red here. This is the seven-day moving average of cases. We all saw this little bit of a spike associated with, uh, the Christmas and New Year holidays, um, but it was managed and is effectively coming down, as you can see here. Uh, these are, I put all four graphs together to, to just make this quick. Our cases are consistently coming down, our positivity rate is consistently coming down, which is excellent, uh, means we have plenty of testing out in our community, our hospitalizations are on a strong decrease, and our deaths are also on a decline. All good news as, as we are moving forward into the spring. Uh, this is our, our two-week incidence rate, um, of new COVID cases by age group. This is also stabilized and is pretty consistent with most cases either being stable or coming down. Um, in terms of vaccine distribution, we are, we are just about finished up with 1A, will be finished up completely with 1A this week. Um, we are working on 1B, um, and we have about 30,000 folks who are in this over 70 age group. And just a reminder for everybody that's listening, this age group, and what you can't see here is what everybody's heard so much about, um, on television, there's a 1B above the line and a 1B below the line. And we've been directed by the Governor's Office and the State Health Department to focus specifically on 1B above the line, and that's because that roughly 78% of the deaths that occur in our state are of this line, and this is why there's such a strong focus on vaccinating this group of people first before moving below that line. Um, we still anticipate that we will be completed with these vaccinations in March, um, and then we'll be able to move below the line following that. That is also dependent upon, of course, what our vaccine supply looks like, and just to, to give you a little more of an update on the capacity for us, we have 31 providers in Boulder County. We can actually do 22,000 doses per week. So we have high capacity to be able to provide a lot of doses per week of the vaccine, but our current allocation is between 800 and 3,000 doses per week. So you can see that the amount of doses that we're actually getting, um, are much lower than the capacity that we have in Boulder County. We are planning, um, as a backup to make sure that we are thinking about, as we move forward, if we need, uh, what you've heard about these large pods, um, but we'll have a, a combination of things, including our providers providing vaccines, some pods, and focusing on some pop-up sites that can help us reach some of our priority populations as well. Uh, you can all keep informed by staying updated on our website. If you just go to Boulder County Public Health, uh, and you go to COVID data, you click on vaccine, and it'll take you to our website, which has a whole host of, of informative things on there, including how to sign up if you need a vaccine, all of our providers are on there, as well as a graph that shows how many vaccines we are distributing per day. Um, and then Chris is going to talk about these next two slides before we turn it over to Helene. Chris, for you.
Happy to do this, and I'm going to save most of my, uh, comments to questions, because I know people, um, this is all brand-new to folks, so I'm going to just, uh, talk briefly about it. We all know that viruses mutate. This is the standard practice. This is not unusual to see. The challenge for us is that there are probably many more variants out there that we actually don't know about. I don't mean to scare you at all, but at least the ones that we're currently seeing are these three variants. The United Kingdom one, we've seen a lot of that in the press, the South African variant, and the Brazil variant. All of these are B, are tracked nationally. The CDC has upped their game in terms of surveillance, and thus, the CDPE is participating this broadly, because we've now seen these cases, at least 10 cases in Colorado. The concern that we have is greatest about this is, uh, has proven to be true. We're unfortunate that, that this strain, the United Kingdom strain, has been able to show, and certainly the South African strain as well, based on epidemiologic data, that they're probably likely to be spread more quickly, and you see that evidence in the United Kingdom. We're very concerned about it in Colorado, because if that variant is, becomes the dominant variant in our community, then we're going to be worried about a bump up in the cases that Jeff just talked about. We're also starting to see, and, and, and it's unfortunate that this data was released a little too early, because it's suggestive that these variants, particularly the UK variant, the B117, it has been shown to have maybe increasing, um, severity in, in the infected people. Now, that doesn't mean that the disease is severe at this point, but we're tracking this very closely. And it, and finally, the most important two things are that the vaccines that are currently in preparation have probably been tested against these variants. Remember, multiple Moderna and Pfizer had clinical trials that involved multiple people across the world, so the people that were exposed were likely exposed to these variants that were out there. So that's currently what's happening. Next slide, Jeff. So I think the unknown for us in terms of the variants in the schools is that we think there's no, going to be no change at this point. We'll still have to watch very closely. The surveillance is happening in Colorado. We probably, the state probably tests anywhere between five to 10 different sites in the, in the state, multiple, uh, sources of these variants using our influenza watch program. So we're going to be watching very closely is whether or not this is transmitted broadly in the schools. And then we have to be ready, you know, because as we see, Jeff has pointed out, the data's going down, but we all have to remain vigilant. We'll still be coming back to the board and talking about those, those, uh, uh, hopefully continued decreases, um, in the schools, but we have to watch very closely. And finally, the most important thing that I wanted to say to the board and to the public is that our prevention strategies, the layers that Randy and our, and BBSD has really put in place are all protective. Masking, physical distancing, uh, small groups, avoiding large crowds, disinfecting, washing our hands, and, and doing all those things, and then now adding the vaccine are all layers of protection that we should continue to, to emphasize. No reason to panic yet, but I would say, let's double down on our prevention strategies and really can make a difference as we watch these variants and, 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 and watch that, making sure that they don't have significant impact on our communities, and I'll stop there. Sorry. Returning it over to Helene.
Yeah, thank you.
Everybody, thanks for having us again. Hope everyone's having a good month. So I will just, uh, also kind of quickly go through our, um, information and just add on a little bit more. So in Broomfield County, our, our numbers, we're still, so we are also in considered level orange, and in terms of where we're seeing our COVID cases, we are kind of in a, almost just staying steady, so just slightly lower on our positivity rate, so it just went down just under, uh, 4.8%, so we're, we're hopeful that can kind of watch that continue to go down and mirroring similar, similar to what we're seeing in the state. Our case incidence, our new cases, that slightly went up, but it's kind of all hovering in and around the same number, so we're still technically upper in that red level, but we're, we're kind of teetering a little bit lower, where we, we will continue to watch that, see where things continue to go, and as Dr. Abina just said, it's, it's all of that layering that really helps to, help bring down these cases, um, overall. And so when we kind of look at what is Broomfield County trends looking like, we see about, you know, the last three weeks, we see just a slight uptick, so very, very minor, but we'll just continue to watch that. We know we do sometimes see some slight correlations with uptick with holidays, and so, you know, as we think about these, the, the next upcoming three-day weekend, just people being really careful and mindful of not, you know, getting together with other households and bigger groups and, you know, ski events, things like that, everything to try to continue to practice being safe, social distance, wearing masks, all those things will help keep our numbers low. And this is just a quick visual to show, just, you know, as we, as we've shared before, we, we know that we need to be real careful with that, that high school age group, but that is where we tend to see more of our cases, and so this just is a quick visual of the different age groups, preschool, elementary, and middle school, and just the importance of, of, of wearing a mask, and, and if someone else in the household tests positive, really important that, that those students also stay home, um, they shouldn't be attending, you know, sports or other activities, just to help prevent spreading the virus any further. And then just to share a little bit more, I know we've, or talk a little bit about the vaccine rollout, the COVID vaccine rollout, that, you know, every, every county, it looks a little different in terms of the allocations that everyone's getting, that varies each week. We are working closely together with Boulder County Public Health, we are working with BBSD, their teams, and the State Health Department, and other hospital partners, so this is just kind of a snapshot of, of where we're, where we're looking at in terms of Phase 1A, in terms of the vaccine rollout for the state. And that partnership involves hospitals, retail pharmacies, our goal of getting 70% of Coloradans that are 70 and over vaccinated by the end of the month, and so that's very dependent on the vaccine that we get in the state and how that, um, just how we can meet that goal. And we're also trying to make sure that, similar to Boulder County, that we have our, our healthcare workers in Phase 1A and 1B above the dotted line as well vaccinated. So it's a group effort for, from community clinics, community partners, other LPHAs, hospitals, everybody's really stepping up, and we're just, we're doing really well in Colorado with the amount of vaccine that we, that we have so far. And then to just highlight in, in Broomfield County specifically, all, we have, um, our, our long-term care facilities, with assisted living as well, they've all had their first, first dose for the COVID vaccine, so that's residents and staff, which is great news to report, and we're near completion of our, our, our 1A and working through our, um, above the dotted line of the 1B progress. And this, this is a, just a photograph of just some of the outreach we've been doing. We've been trying to make sure we're hitting those 70-plus in different, different, uh, senior residences throughout Broomfield County, so we're really, really excited to be able to share that, in, in combination with effort from the hospital partners as well as our pharmacy partners and our health department, we are looking at 40% of 70-plus residents, 70, so that someone's 70 and older being vaccinated in our county, and this just kind of gives a quick visual of the other age groups. And just, we try to keep that communication going. I know it's very frustrating, everybody, you know, it, it's hard to try to understand, to share this, how little vaccine we are getting in terms of the doses each week. It changes, it's very small, it can be 100 doses a week for the whole entire county, so we're trying to keep that communication out there. We have a vaccine interest form that we continue to compile to, you know, get people, uh, on list and, and increase information sharing as we know more, and just ask for everyone's patience, because this is going to be a multi-month rollout as we, as we move forward. And, um, the state has just recently launched a phone number as well, that's a call center to answer questions for the public, so that is included on this slide as well, too, 877 COVAXCO. And this is just a reminder of our, uh, just our information that we keep update, you know, each week with our COVID score, our weekly business, our weekly scorecard, and just information, other information about the county. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much for that. Um, and then are we moving to the mental health piece from Boulder County?
Yes, and I think Steffi is going to present that.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Thanks for having us this evening. I'm Steffi, I'm a, a surveillance data specialist at Boulder County Public Health, and I'm going to present this evening on the mental health data amongst 10- to 17-year-olds, along with running our slideshow, and I'm really hoping for no technical difficulties in doing that. Um, I'm really pleased to have Marcy Campbell join me tonight. She's the Boulder County Public Health Community Mental Health Initiative Coordinator, and she's going to help just provide some context to the data that I'm going to be sharing with you. And so with that little introduction, I'm going to hand it over to Marcy, and I'm going to share my screen.
Perfect. Thanks so much for having us. Looks like it's up and running, so thank you, Steffi, for, um, driving that. So thanks so much for having us to share a little bit about mental health and substance use data for 10- to 17-year-olds. And so, um, prior to COVID-19, we had significant unmet mental health needs already, and so, um, in our data collection in 2018, over 44 million Americans had a mental health condition, and youth mental health conditions continued to rise. So about 1 in 5 or 9 million adults reported having an unmet need. And as you can see on the slide, um, Mental Health America ranked Colorado 40th for adult mental health and 48th for youth mental health, um, and suicide has been a leading cause of death for 10- to 24-year-olds. So from our Healthy Kids Colorado survey data in 2019, we could see that 30.5% or nearly 1 in 3 Boulder County high school youth reported feeling so sad or hopeless for two weeks or more that they stopped doing regular activities. We also see that 16% or nearly 1 in 6 Boulder County high school youth seriously contemplated suicide within the past year from that survey date, um, back the year. So COVID-19, um, the pandemic really has amplified the need for accessible mental health services and support. Um, you know, as we know, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, COVID-19 has impacted the mental health of all of us, um, because it represents a collective trauma and grief event with uncertainty around when it will end. Since the beginning of COVID-19, there's been an explosion in mental health morbidity. From Time Magazine, um, they report a 700% national increase in mental health distress from pre-pandemic data collection in 2018, with young adults and those with children experiencing the greatest increase. So that's really tying to our, our teens and our parents, um, with young kids. So, um, Steffi, if you could advance the slide, um, COVID-19 has impacted mental health really in some complex ways, and so I think while we might typically, um, really be thinking about the isolation that stems from stay-at-home orders or online schooling, there are also a lot of other impacts. So unemployment and financial challenges really impact mental health, of course, as we know, and I did mention that young adults are one of the most impacted. 20 to 29 is, has been reported in some studies as really that key, um, age group, but we know our young adults are also experiencing increased mental health. So fear of having COVID-19 or spreading COVID-19 is also something that is on the minds of our young people. TQ youth who may not live within a, an affirming environment are also impacted. So you can also see other groups such as first responders, medical staff, frontline workers, public health workers. Really, that pressure of being on the front lines is very impactful. It's also really impactful on medical staff, as sometimes the community has had disbelief about the virus and maybe not following public health orders, as well as, um, of course, what we think about in terms of maybe being those last people to see folks who are passing away or caring for folks with severe symptoms. Emerging studies are also noting that those who have had COVID-19 are at increased risk of mental health conditions following their recovery, such as PTSD or anxiety. So there's a conversation about mental health needs, sometimes, uh, you know, it's, it's really a tricky balance. We know that it's important for us to be socially connected, but it's also really important to be able to follow our guidelines. Um, there's a little bit more nuance and complexity to those impacts around mental health. And so we really wanted to understand more clearly what the local, um, COVID-19 impacts were on our mental health and our substance use. And so Steffi is going to share some specific data that we learned regarding emergency departments that helped paint a, a slice of that picture of how, um, COVID-19 is impacting us in Boulder County. Steffi, I'll turn it to you.
Thanks, Marcy. Um, so I wanted to start off by just talking a bit about how, what, the, the source of our data. Um, this is, this is data comes from what's called Syndromic Surveillance. It's a Center for Disease Control platform that is, um, consists of maybe over 5,000 hospitals in 47 states in real time, where, um, data is, is, uh, collected and we're able to detect and monitor symptoms of health events even prior to a diagnosis being made, which allows public health officials to determine if a response is warranted, as in, uh, the pandemic. Um, it's also an excellent resource for us to monitor, um, other reactions from the pandemic, as Marcy was talking about, mental health, substance use, heart attacks, things like that. Um, so that's part of the, um, it's an excellent resource for all of those things. Um, I'm going to be reviewing data from, from five different indicators, alcohol overdose, marijuana overdose, suicidal ideation, suicide attempt and sexual violence in the 10- to 17-year-old age group over the course of two years, 2019 and 2020. And I'm going to, um, present this data looking at graphs. Um, so, uh, the first graph here shows the alcohol overdose. And, you know what, I think I'm sharing my wrong screen. Do you mind if I stop and share the right one? Sorry about that, that's technical difficulty number one. Anyway, um, so the graph I'm going to show, each graph is going to show like this one, where there's cumulative ED visits, emergency department visits on the Y-axis over time, over the weeks of the year. And, um, this graph I added in, just to kind of give you some perspective, we all maybe think that because of the pandemic, that overall emergency department visits to Boulder County hospitals were maybe decreased in the, in 2020, but this graph really compares 2017 data through 2020 data, and it shows that yes, there was a slightly, um, lower number of visits in 2020 compared to 2018 and 2019, but not that much different. And when you look at it, um, by week, just emergency department visits by week, you can see that there was, in fact, a big drop in, um, visits to our local Boulder County hospitals, right when COVID, the first case of COVID was, um, identified in Boulder County, and then, but those visits, uh, started to resume after our stay-at-home order lifted in, in around May. So, um, we did have a drop, but then they started to go back, and indeed, um, we saw another little bit of a drop at the end of the year when we went from orange to red on the dial, but the message is, is that the, the overall visits to emergency department hasn't really been affected by, um, COVID as we may have expected. So now when we look at the, uh, actual data for the alcohol overdose visits, um, again, this is cumulative emergency department visits over time, and green is 2020, blue is 2019. And in fact, we see that in, in 2020, there was a 14%, well, in 2019, 14% higher compared to 2020. So really wasn't a huge impact in this age group. But when, and you, I, I wanted to show this also as emergency department visits by week, um, the number of emergency department visits by week, because the person who requested this data was mostly curious about what happened in the fall when schools, uh, started up again. And, um, it's a little hard to read these, these graphs, but, um, nothing remarkable here, although in the summer, we did see in both years, a bit of a spike in alcohol For marijuana overdose, again, I'm going to look at cumulative ED visits over time, and it's, um, again, about 10 to 11% higher in 2019 compared to 2020 for this age group. Um, when we look at this by weeks, um, again, nothing that remarkable, although you can see a little bit higher, uh, spikes in marijuana overdose visits in the end, beginning and end of the year. For suicide, suicidal ideation in this age group, um, here's where we start to see a bit of an increase in 2020 for cumulative emergency department visits, so by 4% in 2020. And when you look at this by weeks, there's nothing that remarkable to, to note, other than the spike in 2019, um, and that does come, occur right around the beginning of the school year. Um, and now when we look at emergency visits for suicide attempts, um, this sort of correlates with a lot with what Marcy was talking about. Um, here in 2020, we see that the emergency visit cumulative for suicide attempts in, for this age group, 10- to 17, increased by 31% in 2020. Um, and you can see here, when I mark, put a marker in where the first week in September occurs at Week 37, um, just in the, that, you know, late summer, early, and, and throughout the fall, we actually see a, a definite increase in those numbers. I included this slide, um, we recently did a presentation for all age groups and compared years 2017 to 2020. Um, and I'm including this slide because I really think this indicator is so important for us to be thinking about. Um, I looked at nine different age groups for that other, uh, analysis, and all nine age groups for suicide attempts were quite a bit higher. 10- to 17, this age group that we're talking about in, over the four-year course, was only 13% increase in 2020, but look at these numbers. But look at these numbers here. This is quite concerning. And just the fact that it occurred in every age group. And then finally, the last indicator is the visits for sexual violence. And in 2020, this is another big change, where it's 64% higher in 2020 compared to 2019 for this age group. And this just shows that it's sort of occurring throughout the year. I included this table again from the other graph because I think sexual violence is one of the indicators that we saw that was most affected as well. Look at these percent increases were quite high. The difference in this 50% compared to the 64% is because I just looked at more years. So in summary, what we see is that although alcohol overdose, marijuana overdose, and in some ways, suicide ideation weren't that impacted in 2020, definitely we saw some big changes in suicide attempts and sexual violence in this age group. I think Marcy was gonna...
Yeah, I'll share a little bit. So, you know, as we look at this type of data, there's, there are some strengths of the data and then also some limitations as well. So, you know, for one, it's really helpful that we're able to look at severe outcomes related to mental health and substance use, and that we can do the analysis by demographic factors, which really can help us to guide the intervention. When we looked at sort of, you saw in Steffi's slides where we got to see the whole population, there were some age groups that were much more impacted than others. And so that's really important for us to understand as we figure out, how do we support our community better around the mental health and substance use-related needs? Another limitation is that this is only, it's only, you know, emergency department data. And so this is really capturing the most severe outcomes. And as I said, when we, when we try to understand the whole, you know, mental health needs and impacts around COVID, it's a broader picture to help us really know that. But this is just one particular way to tell us about what some changes might look like. And Steffi, you can advance the slide there. So taking a look at this data and thinking about, you know, what really can we do, knowing the data that we're learning today, and also just understanding, you know, we have focused our efforts, we do a health assessment every five years. And so our five-year health priority was identified as mental health back in 2017. So we know mental health has been a significant need for a while, and we're learning some new things about COVID. So what can we really do to support that? One is really to share this data and help people understand. And we also have, you know, the opportunity to really see what, what sort of changes that we're identifying. So unpacking those demographics really helps us as well. It's really important for us to think about looking upstream before those severe outcomes that we got a chance to see about today. So, you know, thinking about how can we intervene earlier? How can we promote help-seeking, help reduce stigma around getting support for mental health and substance use, help folks to access care, and help build resiliency skills among our students and young people? You know, another thing to think about is policy and funding implications. So at the state level, we did see some significant budget cuts in 2020. And there are a lot of those budget cuts were on, related to substance use and mental health supports at the state level. So thinking about how do we continue to advocate for these types of policies and budgets as our new year progresses, and just really prioritizing mental health and substance use supports as critical pieces. Something that we did see as a big change during COVID-19 was the opportunity to access telehealth. And so that really improved the ability for a lot of individuals to get supports and services. And so there is some expanded telehealth, so that's definitely good news for our future. But it's also really important for us to think about, how do we get creative in providing supports virtually and still build the importance of having mental health and substance use supports in part of our daily experience? So that's a little bit about what we wanted to share with you all. And think about in the next slide, just what other questions come up for you as it regards to mental health and substance use data, and if there's any question?
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate having some of the data to think about. We bring up the term "mental health," and it's good to get some context in what it looks like and what are the issues that might be the most pressing to our district. So, Board members, and I'm, just because of the way my screen is right now. Richard, do you have any questions? I'm just going to go in order on this one, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you, Tina. Just a quick question. And thank you for that presentation. It was good information. When you're looking at the five categories, alcohol, marijuana, suicide, ideation, and attempt and violence, did, were you able to disaggregate that data by ethnicity and race? And is that available?
Yes. In fact, for that other presentation that I mentioned, I do have all that data separated by race, ethnicity, and also by gender. It wasn't, so it's overall, it's not, for example, 10 to 17, race, ethnicity, and gender, but it's just sort of overall. And I do have that data. I'd be happy to share that. But it turns out that, I can just sort of summarize it for you as well. Race and ethnicity, I divided out by white, non-Hispanic, Hispanic, any race, and any other race, non-Hispanic. And I looked at it as what percent of the Boulder County population did each represent? And was that significantly different in years 2017 to 2019, and then in 2020? And in fact, I found that for all of them, and I, as I said, I do have the analysis for you if you're interested. And it's posted on our website, so I can share somehow that link. But it, it, race and ethnicity does not appear to be particularly a driver in this. In fact, so the percentage for each indicator was about the same as Boulder County population. Gender was a different story. The one limiting factor about gender is that it's very binary. The Essence Platform, the CDC Platform, only has binary gender data. And so that's a little bit of a big limiting, I think, a big limiting factor. But what I did find, so, is that for each of the indicators for suicidal, for suicide attempts, it affected females more than males. For alcohol overdose, males were affected more than females. For sexual violence, females were affected a lot more than males. Suicidal ideation was a little bit interesting because it affected females more than males until 2020. And then in 2020, males were higher than females. And marijuana overdose was males more than females. So I hope that gives you a little bit of an idea of the overall, anyway, ways that this was affected.
Thank you very much for that information. And yeah, if you could share that, I'd appreciate it. Also, there's no way that you can get the 10 to 17 age group disaggregated data by ethnicity, is there?
Yes, I absolutely can do that. It takes time, is all. But I for sure can do that.
I would really appreciate if you could send that over, too.
Yeah, that, as I said, I don't have that readily available, so that I will have to work on that and provide that. But I'm happy to do that.
And then I would also add that our Healthy Kids Colorado survey data is just aggregated by race. And we also see, you know, of course, gender, but it has a little bit more information in terms of gender there for us, and then also by sexual orientation. And so that's, that's helpful as well.
Okay. And I think we'll be able to put these slides onto our board docs when we're done, if that's okay? And then we'll add the ones that Richard brought up that Steffi will provide us as well.
Do you want me to, is there a place where I can send you the link to that slide set?
Yeah, you can send it to Randy Barber, or me, or Laura Schaefer.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll pass it along. Kathy, do you have any questions?
Richard, was that all you had?
Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions. One was for Dr. Urbina. So I think I understood what you said about how we test for the variants. Is it, is it like, we just test a certain number of samples? Is that right? We don't test everyone? So how are we tracking the new variants? I just don't understand that process.
Happy to answer that question. I know I ran through those slides very quickly. The machinery to actually develop, to sequence the genomic code is very complicated. Not every laboratory does this, so they're not able to, and it takes time to do it. So they're not able to actually get every single PCR test that we've done to actually test them. So they take a sample of them. And we have this surveillance that we use all over the state. It's called the Syndromic Influenza Surveillance System. So we use that same connections that we have around the state to take certain samples of the PCR tests that are done in those communities, send them to the state batched, and then track and look for that, those variants. And each of the variants, and you've heard about the S gene drop, well, that's one of the, that's the B117 variant that we can actually detect. Some of the other variants have different changes that we're tracking, but we're taking a percentage. And I can't tell you exactly how many, but it's probably less than 5% of all PCR tests that are done statewide. But, you know, we've now only had 10 variants that have been discovered. There are certain, there are sums that are pending, but we know it's here. And we know it's in 20-plus states in the country, so we're tracking all of those now. I don't know if that helps, Kathy. Does it?
And it's just a wait and see till we see if it, if we're able to get in front of it with the vaccines or whether it gets in front of us before we get the vaccines out, pretty much, right? It's a race.
Exactly right. And that's why I alluded to the fact that all the prevention strategies that the schools are doing and our communities are doing are actually protective, regardless of the variant. It's still spread by respiratory droplet and/or aerosolization. Now, the good news is so far the vaccines are effective. So when you add those two together, you know, we're still going to have some good prevention strategies. What we worry about most is that if this infection, these variants take over and they're more contagious, then we'll have more cases than more hospitalizations and more deaths. So I think that's why I alluded to the preliminary data says that they're getting more hospitalizations, but is that because of the infectiousness of the virus? Or is it because that it's actually more severe? We don't know that yet, and that's why we're tracking all these cases.
That makes sense. Do we have a better sense yet of how we're even deciding that how the district gets the vaccine numbers? I understand we didn't get what we thought we were going to get. Do we have any sense of how that is being decided yet?
Can speak to that a little bit. We are working pretty closely with the district nursing. So we have prioritized school nurses, anyone that has like a higher risk of like a healthcare, kind of direct patient care taker for staff. So between Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield Public Health, we've been knocking off most of that staff list. And then the projected timeline for, as we move forward, what we call below the dotted line, is hopefully the beginning, the end of February, beginning of March. And I know we have some hospital partners, like Children's and UC and ACL that are all, are also in the realm of helping to get educators vaccinated once we do get that green light, once we do get more vaccine in the state consistently.
Yes, so my question wasn't very fully framed. I was just wondering how the state decides how much vaccine we get? And I think we still don't know the answer to that. And I don't think the state knows how they know how much vaccine they get.
There are some formulas out there, but I don't know, it does feel a little bit confusing still, though, because at a federal level, we don't always know for sure if there's going to be some impacts. And they did have to shuffle some things around in that we wanted to make sure the long-term care facilities were vaccinated in a timely fashion because it, we became aware, at the state level, we became aware that many were not getting scheduled until February, and late, and late February. So that, that did impact the breakdown. But it does fluctuate still, unfortunately, just from a federal level down to a state level and local. But just, I don't know if we said this earlier, but I forgot to mention it myself. But just to, just to clarify, part of working with Governor Polis' office and the State Health Department, we are looking to prioritize, once we do get to that, below that align one, the educators and childcare providers will be prioritized first in terms of that rollout. So that, that definitely is, is a priority and a concern for all, for all of us in terms of helping the schools be open and just kind of keeping everyone safe.
I just had a quick question about one of your slides, Helene. And it showed that the elementary numbers were higher than the middle school numbers. Am I misinterpreting? It was just a curious finding, because my understanding is those should have been reversed.
It can be just a kind of a snapshot. We've definitely seen the sprinkling of increases in the childcare age group as well. It's so, it's, I wouldn't say that it's exclusively only that. It's, it just kind of has been how, it could be related to holidays. It could be, there could be other kind of components that may be, you know, testing, access. There's different things that may play a part in how that has played out.
So just a question from Marcy or Steffi. If you could pick one of, you had some strategies, and everybody's living in a constrained financial environment. What would, what could we do as a school district? What would be our highest priority to work with you all to help address those high numbers in the suicide and suicide ideation numbers? Is there one strategy that you think would be our highest if we had to prioritize?
Sure. I think that's, that's always tricky to prioritize just one thing, right? Especially when I know that you all are getting so much, you have so many things on the plate. But I think incorporating the opportunity to support mental wellness throughout the daily school experience would be a key priority. So having this come up as a normalized part of conversation really allows young people to be able to maybe say to one of the adults that they're seeing, hey, this is, this is harder for me. So finding ways to be able to build mental health into the daily conversation, thinking about stress, all of those types of things would be a really key component. And I am always happy, one of the pieces of my role is really about partnering with the school districts and with other community partners. So I'm always happy to have further conversations with Boulder Valley School District to see how we can really be of support in guiding what might be those, that one or that top, based on even age, too, so.
Thanks. So I, I think that's all I had, Tina. Thanks.
Okay. Donna?
Just a few comments that I've heard from community members and people that... I'm a bit concerned as well for those that don't get reported, that, you know, to sit and obsess over it or think about it. Someone sent me some information from the Nevada School District about kids searching on their computers and their devices from school, how to commit self-harm or suicide. And I realize we have the hospital data, and we have self-reporting. And I know of a student recently that was put hospitalized for two or three days because a friend said, you know, she was talking about it. So, you know, then the, the parents became concerned and she went to the hospital. But what I'm concerned about is, is there a way, the people that aren't reporting, or, you know, they, we find out when, almost when it's too late, when they arrive at the hospital, or, or they, you know, somebody fills out a survey. Any suggestions on, I like the suggestion on, you know, bring it up more often and talk about it. But do we have any way of looking at devices like they did in the, in this other school district to find out, you know, are kids really obsessed with searching about this? That's one question.
Sure. I'm not 100% sure in terms of, you know, do we have a way of doing sort of, you know, internet or electronic surveillance to understand what young people are searching? But I'm happy to look into that and, and get back to folks to see if that's a possibility on some level. I think, you know, what, what comes up as a key point, again, is just reminding young people that this is hard, this is a hard time for all of us. And we can have difficult times with, you know, having an age-appropriate way of saying it, of course, but just reminding folks that it's important to reach out and seek help when you or someone... when you or someone that you're connected to is struggling. And I think it's always helpful for, you know, the educators to also, there's training such as QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer. It's a really helpful one-hour training that could even be done online that helps adults because adults, the positive adults are really key as well as the peers to be able to ask those questions when they maybe see something a little bit different about their student, you know, to ask them more about what's going on and really be able to approach that topic. Because I think that is the challenge when we're navigating so much right now is being able to see that while we're all under stress, it's still important for each and every one of us to be able to bring it up, have a conversation, know that we might be having more anxiety, more depression, more withdrawal from some of our normal activities. And so how can we really normalize having that conversation? And reminding young people about some of the things that do help, like reaching out and talking to a friend or moving our bodies every day, trying to get good rest, turning off the social media and electronics a little bit before bedtime so we can start to rest our minds a little bit. So I think those, those types of things really do help. And again, more than happy to continue the conversation and be a resource and support.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that. It's really a tough topic for me to even think about having been impacted by my own brother taking his life. And, and, you know, it's, it's after it's too late. It's not a hospital visit or a survey that was filled out. It's just done and it's over. So just trying to catch it early enough. Anyway, off to just one other question that's on the other side of the aisle about. I have, my daughter-in-law teaches in another district and they're using the Binax Now. And I had sent that to the board members today. Any reports from Dr. Urbina or anyone on if BVSD could move in that direction? Or which school districts are using it and how helpful that is for our teachers, students, staff?
I'd be happy to answer that, Rob. But do you want to talk about our discussion first? What do you think?
Well, I would say that, thank you, Dr. Urbina. Thank you, Donna. I think that that's something that we are considering. I think that, you know, we obviously have been partnering with COVID Check to do those COVID visits or the, the screening, the testing both at Centaurus and then doing the mobile sites, which has been highly successful. I think what we're considering right now is the cost associated with the Binax Now and to what extent does that, do we need to continue to do that in addition to the COVID check testing? And so I think that the staff has been working with that. We'll be bringing a recommendation forward on that. But certainly, the ability for our teachers and our community to be tested is an important layered strategy. But that's something that we're looking at, we're considering. I think there is some value in it, but I do think that the cost associated with the Binax Now testing is much higher than what was initially reported we thought would be. And so that's just something that we're having to consider.
Thanks for answering that. I just didn't know. I was just aware that Brittany got hers in the mail. And I was like, wow. And so I wanted just to fill us in on how that was going. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Kitty, any questions?
Yes. But the first thing I want to say for those watching at home is I laughed, not because of anything that Marcy was saying, but because somebody's dog barked, which got my dog barking. So I just don't want anyone to think I was being disrespectful of anything. So I do have a couple of questions, first about vaccines. So correct me if I'm wrong, so teachers and, I mean, I'm assuming paras and everybody who works with kids will be in 1B, is that correct?
Yeah, so we call it below the dotted line, if that makes sense.
Yeah, right, below the line.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Also, are people being vaccinated where they live or where they work? Or, because I know I signed up with Boulder County to get notified when it's my turn. So how does that work for the teachers? I mean, is it going through the school district? Is every, well, stop asking and see if you have an answer.
Sure. And if anyone else wants to chime in, feel free to. It looks a little different sometimes in each county. So, and there's, I, there are a lot of different opportunities out there to get on different lists. But definitely Boulder and Brumfield, we both have means of trying to support connecting the school staff to our vaccine that comes into the county, into the health departments directly, as well as we're trying to kind of be a partner, connect them with the school, with the pharmacies that have been working with us. And then we also know that there's some hospitals that like Children's will also be collecting names. So I, so we have helped connect them with the HR teams at BVSD. And that's going to kind of continue to evolve as, as we, as we get more clarification of how much vaccine will be coming in to the state. So it's kind of multi-pronged in that someone might get it where they live as well as they may get it where they work. And it just, sometimes just depends, one, one opportunity may come, may come up faster than another opportunity.
Got it. Yeah, so I can see how that would make it really difficult for somebody who wanted to be able to track, okay, you know, what information are the teachers getting about when they're going to be vaccinated? Because it could, sounds like it could come from any number of places.
Well, I, and I'm not sure if Stephanie is on this tonight or not, but I know that, I know that information had been shared to BVSD staff. So I'm not sure if anyone else wants to speak more to that. But I do think that they've tried to put that information out there.
No, I'm happy to respond. So for those employees that we have above the line, all have either been, 99% have either been vaccinated or have standing appointments. And really appreciate our partnership with both Brumfield and Boulder County Public Health to make that happen. You know, Kitty, to answer your question, I think that we want to be here for our employees. And so while, while folks may try to find other avenues where they live outside of, of the district managing that, that we will be taking the lead and making sure that, that we work towards providing that information, clear guidance and direction on how to get those appointments and how to prioritize those employees within our system. And then if folks have, they want to go on their own and do some other things based on where they live, to what Helene's saying, that, you know, the way that these vaccines are coming into the different health departments in different counties is different, right? And so there may be people that get on multiple lists, but they can count on us to make sure that they're on a list for us if they, if they don't have, want to go through those other opportunities or if they do live in Boulder County. And I don't know if Mike, if you wanted to add anything else or anybody else on the call.
So, Dr. Anderson, you're absolutely right. What about that? The thing about what we've done so far, who we've vaccinated, they have received a letter from HR basically letting them know, here are the five sites that we're partnering with. In this case, it was Safeway Stores. We had it in Longmont, Boulder, to go get vaccinated with the exact day and the number of doses and when they could get it. So a lot of people have responded and done that. So it's worked quite well. We've had a few little blips, boots in the, in the, in the system, but we've been able to get that done because some of the links didn't work with their browsers and things of that sort. But it's been, it's been pretty successful so far.
So then that brings up another question, is each county gets their allocation of vaccine. And is that based on population? Could it be based on how many people work there? I'm just wondering how those decisions are made, if you even know.
I wish we knew, Kitty. Is that, you know, the governor's making some decisions, the federal government's making some decisions. CDPH is trying to standardize that across the counties. Each of the counties is working on this independently, you know. So we don't necessarily have a perfect strategy yet. You know, I think we're trying, and Helene put her website on, in her slides. We have a website in Boulder County as well. So you can go to ourboldercounty.org and you can sign up, as you probably have done already, and get any notification and finding out where those vaccines are available. So unfortunately, it's still a mishmash of systems. And, but knowing that, really, we're all waiting for more vaccine. That, that really is the bottom line. And when that more vaccine comes, we'll have plenty of providers and plenty of people ready to take the vaccines. Hopefully, there'll be that connection soon, so.
And I'll just add that, I mean, for any of the BVSD staff that's listening, we, we are absolutely prioritizing you guys. And so we, we know that everybody, we wish we had more vaccine now, but we will, will definitely work very quickly, Boulder and Brumfield together, to make sure that we get the educators vaccinated. We know how critical this is and how important it is. So I do, I don't want people to feel like they have to hurry and find lists and lists out there because we absolutely will make sure this happens quickly for, for the rest of the BVSD staff.
And I really appreciate you sharing that because, and I know that I've shared this with both you and with Jeff and Dr. Urbina. You know, for some people who get their news through social media, they'll see posts of people saying, I work here and I got my vaccine, right? And then those are, that, that information is, is kind of coming into the district, you know, framed up like, why aren't you fighting for us to make sure that we get the vaccine? And we've done everything that we possibly can to prioritize our educators and our employees. I think it's important for the public to know and understand that. We'll continue to fight for that. We'll continue to push to make sure that educators are prioritized, that when vaccines come in, that, I think that this pandemic has shown in our community the importance of our schools being open and having folks vaccinated to operate for, for not only just the widespread good of our community, but for business, so on and so forth. So I think, I appreciate you sharing that, that we're doing everything we can to prioritize our educators within the, within the parameters that we're given. And while some folks may see things on social media with folks making claims that somehow they cut the line or, or got a vaccine somehow, some way, that that isn't being widespread, that actually, that what we're doing is within, you know, we're doing everything that we can to make sure that happens for our people.
So I have one more question. So I heard that Governor Polis has called for using the vaccines that are being saved as the second vaccine to go ahead and use them as first vaccines for, so more people can get that. And I just wondered, and I guess this is for Dr. Urbina, is, one, whether you know whether that's actually going to happen? And two, what would be the impact of that?
I don't know if that's going to really happen. I know that they're trying to simultaneously deliver second doses for the folks that are already been immunized, particularly folks in, as Helene talked about in that Phase 1A, long-term care facilities, healthcare workers. Those are still trying to, we're still trying to get those second doses to those folks because they're at highest risk of being in contact. So that's still happening while we're rolling out, as Helene talked about in her phases. I loved her slide, is that we're trying, as we get more vaccine, trying to roll out, finishing that 1B above the line and then starting with the 1B below the line. So, so that's hopefully what's happening. There is a danger if we don't, in terms of not having people completely vaccinated with those two doses, because that's the greatest optimum level of protection if you get those two doses within that three or four-week period. There is a danger of not getting that optimum protection. So hopefully, as that vaccine rolls out, we can finish doing the second dose and add the first dose. And you'll see a lot of strategies across the world. The UK is doing, you know, spreading it out over weeks. And there's a danger there, I think, of not getting people fully vaccinated. So you give partial vaccination to some people, but not full vaccination to others. So there's a trade-off there.
And I'll just chime in a little bit more that I think that maybe the worry there was that if anyone was sitting on vaccine, they shouldn't be sitting on vaccine. So I can give you with 100% assurance that Boulder and Brumfield County, like as soon as we get it, it is going out and it's going into arms and getting into appointments. And so I, I, we don't even get the, there's not even second vaccine sitting to like, use it somewhere else because, second doses, because as soon as we get it in, it's going into those appointments for those second doses. So I think it's, you know, partly the messaging, I think, was just to make sure that no vaccine should be sitting anywhere. And so I just want you all to know that Boulder and Brumfield County are moving it immediately in terms of getting appointments scheduled for eligible individuals.
Well, thank you. Because one of the things that concerned me about that is, are we going to have people half-vaccinated and not realizing that it's not good enough and, you know, not helping as much as it should? And so that's all my vaccine questions, or comments. So I had one from Marcy though for about, talking about mental health and talking about, you know, checking in with kids during the day. Do you all recommend or do you know if anything is going on with students being led, say, in activities that can help reduce anxiety, like mindfulness or meditation, you know, anything like that to help them self-regulate better? Because it seems to me if we could teach our kids, you know, how to self-regulate, that would be helpful. I'm not saying it's going to prevent, you know, all suicides. But, so what's your take on that?
So just to clarify your question, are you asking if I know if those things are happening currently in the district?
Well, yeah, and I guess that question would be for somebody in the district. But, yeah, is that something you would recommend?
Yes, I would definitely recommend consistent social-emotional learning so young people are getting the skills around, you know, still having that daily input around those social and emotional skills as well as things like mindfulness are really helpful. And, you know, there's a variety of ways to boost resiliency and, and think about skills, you know, in terms of self-regulation, even metacognition. So thinking about how we're thinking. So, gosh, it seems like that really was hard for you. What do you think made that tricky? So just some of those types of things can be helpful as well. Things like restorative conversations, so teaching those skills to students and classroom teachers are really valuable. So there's really a variety of factors, but I think, you know, it's, it's the different layers of things that could be useful and mindfulness certainly can play a part.
Yeah, I certainly hope we can have, you know, do everything possible. Rob has an answer.
I do. And I'm going to ask Margaret to weigh in a little bit. Board members, as you'll recall, you know, we, our Student Support Services team built out a series of trainings and resources for our teachers as we came back into school with lessons as part of this mindfulness, building this resiliency as well. Margaret, do you want to talk about that for a moment on some of the things that we've done there? And then also, board members, as we get into our part of the COVID update after your questions, we'll talk a little bit more about what we're going to continue to do and how we're going to expand some of our supports and accesses for kids. So, but I'll turn it over to Margaret.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I think what's important too is that even pre-COVID, Kitty, there were a lot of, Director Sergeant, there were a lot of things that we were doing prior to make sure that our systems were in place so that our students were supported. And we've really tried to enhance that K5 implementation of social-emotional support, making sure that in middle school, we have social-emotional systems during the virtual times with teachers, connecting with counselors on a regular basis so that students know and understand where to go for the support and their explicit lessons and components and modules. And actually, one of the things that we did was take the inventory across the district so we could see the cross-integration of vocabulary so that we were really clear on what we were trying to articulate to students so that they didn't feel like there was a duplicative vocabulary going on and whatever they used, anybody would understand them. So those are just some high-level pieces and we can certainly share more information. Our Student Support Services has done an incredible job trying to find systems that support students in lessons.
Oh, thanks. I had seen that somewhere in communications about teachers being trained, but I didn't quite know what it meant. So thank you. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, Lisa?
Thanks. You know, Kitty, I'm just thinking, my, my first grader I get to see is work on Mondays, of course. And yesterday, one of his SLE listens was a storybook and some Sesame Street videos that was all focused on mindfulness and on using his five senses to find ways to calm down and reconnect. So it's nice, I think, on Mondays, getting to see some of the work that they're doing. Marcy and Steffi, I don't have any questions, but I do want to say how much I appreciated your presentation and especially that you started it out by reminding us that as a community at large, this isn't a single-year problem and that we have a lot of work to do about this on an ongoing basis. Rob, my question is for you. It looks like our case numbers are looking pretty good. And while we don't want to be complacent, that's obviously a good sign. And I thought the Brumfield numbers with that gap between middle school and high school was pretty interesting. So I'm wondering when we anticipate having a conversation about increasing in-person middle school days?
I would say that that's going to be an ongoing conversation that we'll have with both, with both Jeff, Zach, and Jason over at Brumfield County Public Health. I think that we're really excited about where we are, that, that we are not only have all of our kids back in person, that we've got middle school. our kids back in person, that we've got middle school and high school in two days a week. In our presentation that you'll hear after your questions, you'll hear a little bit more about our immediate focus, which is how do we increase the amount of supports for our students, especially around some of these mental health issues? I do think that there's things that we'll have to consider as we, as we think about expanding. We are seeing a significant amount of quarantining. I think we're going to talk a little bit about the success stories as the targeted quarantining has had for us. But I can, you can, I can predict an ongoing conversation on that at our next board meeting. Certainly, we'll have Jeff and Dr. Urbina back to discuss that, and we're constant communications on when's the right time to move forward. Think that the concern that I have is, if you go forward too fast, you're not going from four days to two days. If you get to the cases where you can't go, you could potentially go to four days all the way back to remote. We know how important this in-person contact is with our kids and our teachers in our schools. And so I think those are the things that we're trying to navigate. Excited where we are, continuing to have the conversation. Now, if the cases continue to go down, that this variant is not, doesn't create a significant impact in our state and our community, I think that it's going to be dependent on those cases continuing to go down to be able to make that a reality. And again, we're just going to have to kind of watch this, how, as it goes. Excited that we are where we are now and that we're maintaining, certainly don't want to go backwards and want to just move forward in a smart manner. I don't know, Jeff, if you wanted to share any other insight on that as well?
Rob, I think you covered exactly what our conversations have been, and I also support that. The thing that we're watching most closely, obviously, is the variant. We are going to get some predictions from the Colorado School of Public Health on some different levels of transmission control, which is the fancy word now, that used to be social distancing, and looking at what would the variant do in those scenarios going forward, from the number of cases we could expect, the number of hospitalizations and ICU surges we could expect based on different scenarios in Colorado of what we know about the disease now, those we expect to come in the next week. That'll help inform us as well, but obviously, we're keeping a really close eye on that. We're headed in the right direction, so the biggest message here for everyone that's listening is please continue to mask, social distance, wash your hands. We're doing the right things to keep the spread down, and it's going to be critical knowing that the variant is likely more here than just the 10 cases that have been identified in Colorado at this point. So please keep up those strategies, and we'll continue to talk with Jason and Rob and our Chief Medical Officer and Dawn at St. Rain Valley School District.
Thank you so much, Rob and Jeff. That's the end of my questions.
Okay. Stacy?
I don't have any questions, just thank you for all the information and for always being so available and willing to help and give us the information that we need. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, and I just.
Can I respond really quickly to the question Donna had, because I did a little investigation into it? And the problem is, is that the binax test is only paid for by the state for a month at the most, and then it falls on the district to pay for. And I know for Adams' toll, it's already a couple hundred thousand dollars. So I think what Rob said is what we're trying to do is pretty effective, and I just think there was some misrepresentations out there about the cost of it and who was going to pay for it.
Thanks, Kathy. I had a quick question. Just when we talk about the new variants, there have been a few articles on the internet about upgrading our mask game to double and triple-layer masks. Do we need to be doing that here in Boulder, or should we be giving guidance to our students to do that? Where are we on masks?
I did see the same article, Tina, and I think it's always reasonable to have more protection, but I think at this point, our recommendations regarding two-layer masks, the surgical masks are sufficient enough as a layer, and then adding other layers, the physical distancing, the filtration. I'm very concerned if people start moving to, and I saw the article, that you move to surgical masks or N95 masks, then you really start limiting people's performance and ability, because I carry around my N95 mask in case I need it, but frankly, I can't breathe or walk, you know, 10 or 15 feet with an N95 mask. So I think using a strategy that we're doing now with our two-to-three ply cotton masks and/or surgery masks, and then goggles and/or face shields for those who are working that, and then all the other things are reasonable assumptions, and should be, we should continue that. So it's my recommendation.
Thank you. And then I had a question for Marcy and Steffi about the Safe to Tell and whether there have been reports coming through Safe to Tell, and whether that's changed year over year, if you happen to know.
Yeah, I know that the Colorado Crisis Line number has increased really significantly. So I don't know specifically the statistic around Safe to Tell. You know, I know that really what we're seeing is any crisis line has gone up, so I would make the assumption that they have also increased, but I would want to just see if there was a possible way for us to get that specific information back to you. But things like the Trevor, the line that's used primarily for LGBTQ youth, that's gone up as well significantly. So I think, you know, it's important and, you know, just a good thing to continue reminding folks, and I know that you have all of this information out there, that those types of things are available for people to call in, so.
Okay. And I just want to thank you again for this, for Boulder County Health and all of the great information you give us, and especially for the mental health presentation. It's on all of our minds. We all talk about it a lot, and it's great to get some more understanding about this. And I know it took you a lot of time to compile this together for us, and we really, really appreciate it. So with that, I think we can move on to our next item. So Rob, are you leading the next item?
So not necessarily the next item, we just have a brief few slides to kind of talk to the board in regards to some of the things that are happening internally within the district in regards to COVID-19 and how we're working to support our families and community. And with that, I believe I'm turning it over to Margaret.
Margaret? Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, here tonight to give a quick update. So first, I just want to start with return to learning, super excited. Last week, during the last board meeting, there had been some requests around attendance and remote versus online. The specificity of that data is that over the last two weeks, we've been at about 25% remote, give or take 1%, and 74-ish% in-person, and our attendance rate is extremely high. We only have about .2 students missing, that we really essentially don't know if they are ill non-COVID, and part of our work has been to track those students down. So super excited, you can see all those masks, and underneath those masks are smiling faces. So we can move to Rob Price, who's got some information with our COVID check update.
Margaret, thank you. Good evening, board members. Just a quick reminder, we have three testing sites. We have our Centaurus High School testing site that is available for staff, students, and the community. And then we've also got two mobile testing sites in the district that are at an individual school every day of the week, and those have been tremendously successful, as you can see on the slide. In the last, in the first 10 days that we had those stood up, we've tested, or we performed over 1,200 saliva tests, and that has resulted in saving the cohort more than 30 classrooms, and that's through the use of those mobile testing sites. So results are usually turned around in 36 hours, or typically back in 36 hours, usually around 30 hours. Next slide. So this is just a representative statement that we're getting from a number of our principals and our teachers. This, just the additional testing across the district really has increased the layer of safety with the additional capacity. So this was a quote from Principal Oswick out of Woodyer Elementary. Next slide. And then this is a quote from one of our parents, and this is one of many quotes that we're receiving. And I just want to say again, thanks to the board, thanks to Dr. Anderson for letting us put these forward. These mobile testing sites are district-led, whereas the Centaurus site is led by COVID Check Colorado. So with that, I will turn it back over to Margaret. Thank you.
All right, so I just want to take a quick moment to say thank you to all of our teachers and staff. We really want to focus on how well our staff is doing with masking and distancing and the 15-minute rule. Because of all of this hard work, we've made a significant difference, and we've seen a decrease in the number of staff needing to quarantine when there's an in-school exposure. We know that targeted contact identification is definitely more difficult, and that the, especially at the elementary level, we've been able to utilize seating charts at the higher grades so that we are only removing small groups of children when we have to. And actually, our numbers are pretty exciting. So at the secondary level, the staff has been great in providing those seating charts and maintaining the distance of students, and we've had no staff quarantining, and an average of five students. That's one-third the number of staff per exposure before the winter break. That's really incredible, and it's because of everybody's hard work, getting us back to school and getting us staying in school. So just want to say thank you to all of you for that. Next slide. I think one of the things that's important to think about is our current situation. We're obviously celebrating the fact that we can have our students back in school and that we have returned all forms of in-person learning. We've got next week our preschool transitioning into the Phase 4. And one of the things that we're trying to do is plan ahead as we've started through this entire process over the last year or so. We're working on our rites, spring rites of passage, so things like prom and graduation and promotion ceremonies, and our health partners have been really helpful over the last couple of weeks, helping us even to the level of Valentine's Day coming up, with our graduation plans and our prom plans are well underway with our high schools. And then our catch-up plan, so not only what's happening now, but as we're moving forward 21 and 22. And I think it's important for the community and all to understand that really it's about, currently in each building and in each classroom, specific to our students, what are we doing now to make sure that our students are able to catch up and that we're gathering that data so that we know what we have to continue to leverage moving forward? What we're really excited about is that it's a three-component program. So we're talking about now, we're talking about next year, and we're talking about beyond, because we know that a small gap is not going to be enough to really fill what we need to do moving forward. So we're just very conscientious around making sure that the plan is a comprehensive approach and really meets the needs of the individual students. Next slide. We do have a super exciting announcement, you know, as we always try to bring information to the board and to our community through these updates, one of the things that we will be launching on February 1st is a high school support update. I mean, High School Support Day, I apologize. So starting February 1st, our high schools will be open on those Monday launch days. It'll be a half-day session, and it's specifically for finding a safe place for students to go. We have, we'll have mental health support available, both virtually, which we've had since the beginning, and in-person. What we would ask is that families make an appointment, and I'll give a little bit of information around that here in just a second. There will be supervision in the cafeteria or the library designated by the school. You will have had to fill out a health screener to make sure that you're eligible to come to school that day. And part of our information is to make sure that we have families understand that there won't be any transportation for this on Mondays at this point. We'll be providing snacks, but there won't be typical meals for students. It's really more of a drop-in opportunity for students who may need Wi-Fi or who may need just to be in a different learning space, and that each of our schools is developing a plan specific for their community. So as an example, some schools may have an AM session, and other schools may have a PM session. We know that our teachers are doing the hard work of professional learning on Mondays, and we want to make sure that our students can, because they're going to school less days, just have an opportunity to check in on Monday, and we hope to expand that as we move forward over the next couple of weeks. So that's just our first launch there. It's also really exciting to share that, as many of you may know, we have our athletics and our activities program have launched, and we're in season B, and we want to make sure that we're, I want to make sure that we're noticing the appreciation, again, for Boulder County and Broomfield County Health Departments. We could not do this. Our six high school athletic directors have been incredible to make this possible. Tonight's our first competition, and we have boys' and girls' basketball, wrestling, girls' swimming downhill, and Nordic skating, skiing, sorry. And all of these programs are aligned to the current health guidelines. Next slide. I'm trying to go slow and fast at the same time, so I apologize. All right, so one of the things that has come up tonight, and obviously over the last few months, as we've seen the mental health impacts for all of our students, as well as our community and our adults, so I just want to take a few seconds to share. The student support team has been doing an incredible job. The team is out in buildings, they're connecting with kids and with families. We have partnerships that are moving forward. Somebody mentioned tonight, 10, we've got mental health partners that we're working with. Marcy, who was just on the call, works with us very closely as we continue to advance those partnerships for our students and those opportunities for support. Before I hand this over to Randy, I want to say that one of the things that we've been very proud of is our FCL support on Monday launch as much as possible, giving kids those coping skills, as we mentioned before, and trying to just make sure that staff and community understand how to ask those questions, what does that look like for students? As an example, we've launched our assist training again, which is support for students considering, or for individuals considering suicide or looking for options for support. So please know that those things are always consistently improving and that we're always looking for feedback. I'm going to hand it over to Randy, because we're very excited about the second portion of this slide, so that he can share the timeline and information forthcoming.
I appreciate that. As usual, our job in communication is really to try to make sure that we're highlighting and promoting the great work of our educators and our teams. And so we've been working closely with the Student Support Services to truly take the things that the counselors and the mental health advocates and all those folks that they have in their department and all the connective tissue to that, all the resources and the other, you know, supports that we have in place, and really make them more easy to find. We already have a place on our website that's perfect for this, it's a helper students. We have some resources that are in there, but our effort right now is to really, A, to make sure that we have as much resource as we can built into that place, to bring in even more stuff, things that we know are available and just haven't made it to the website yet. Look for ways that this information can be carried out to our schools. The new website really gives us some ability to ensure that this flows nicely into school websites, that you don't have to go to the district website, although that helper students will be on every page, is on every page currently. And again, as we really work to try to make this easier to navigate, one of the things that we're going to be trying to do is put ourselves in the shoes of our students and parents and try to make sure that when you walk in there, that, you know, while we will continue to have a lot of resources, that you're able to quickly organize that in ways that, you know, meet your needs, that you know you're looking for something specifically, you can get to what you're looking for quickly. I mean, that's the key of what we're trying to do here. We've been doing for quite some time, you know, stories and that kind of thing. We really want to make sure that people feel like they can find the things that they're looking for. And again, looking for ways that we can customize that for the school. Contacts for the people that, you know, if you're on the district site, who do you contact in your school, making sure that they have an ability at that school level, then customize with the specific things that they're doing. And then we'll be launching all this out as part of a special spot next week. We'll have, again, some additional stories in regards to what all these folks do, so that, again, people have a better idea of what a counselor can help them with, what a mental health advocate, you know, all the additional supports that we have out there, really trying to encapsulate that and get that into people's consciousness by having it in their inbox, right there in front of them. And I'll turn it back over to Margaret.
Awesome, thank you, Randy. I want to take two seconds and just say that, I mean, we could talk about this for hours and hours, the level of work and certainly the support and collaboration that goes into all of this work that we've done. So I know, I mean, I talk kind of fast, and I'm trying to slam a bunch of information into just a few slides, and certainly our team works really hard to do this, but if there are any questions, obviously, outside, certainly reach out to us. We're here to support and give information about all of these amazing things that are happening as we're moving forward, learning how to navigate this incredible situation. So on this slide, I just want to talk a little bit about our learning options for fall of 2021. So we've learned over time, obviously, through all of this, that our teachers have done an amazing job trying to balance and navigate everything that we throw at them, right? So starting for next year, based on a lot of feedback, we will be offering our in-person learning, which is students coming in based on where we are in our system, whether that's hybrid or at home or in-person, based on where we are on the scale and the phases from the health department, but essentially in-person learning. The second component is we know that there are a fair number of students who prefer online but really want a synchronous experience, and we want to make sure that it's structured and that students have a learning environment that's similar to what they would experience in a traditional classroom, but for a variety of reasons would rather have that experience at home. We've moved that to a centralized location, and that system will We've moved that to a centralized location and that system will be called LINK. Now, the benefit is that we have an incredible online system through BU. So LINK will be powered by our Boulder Universal. It is a new launch that centralizes, as I said, all of the learning environment for those families that want online learning in a, in a synchronous experience. They will, the students will still be connected to their home schools. And this is a K-8 model, K-5 model at this point with middle school in the K-8. Let me slow down again. That learning experience will be powered by Boulder U, BU, and the students will have the, the parents will have the opportunity to choose that as their learning environment while still connected to their home environment at school. So I can still be whoever, you know, whatever mask that, which of course I can't think of one right now, and be connected to their school through communication. If they're involved in activities, if they want to be part of their school community, they can do that. And then, of course, we'll still have our traditional Boulder Universal model that provides the flexible learning so that students aren't tied into that daily synchronous classroom structure but have the opportunity to connect when they need to, as well as do the asynchronous learning that we've all come to understand to be the original online system. So those deadlines, that communication is going out this evening, I think this evening, or tomorrow at the latest. And basically it lets parents know that those are the options so that we can continue to expand on what we've done over, over time. We also are excited to launch the PK option online as well, and there will be more information to come. PK has been communicating to their families already, so if you're a PK family, please make sure you connect with them if you're interested in that completely virtual experience for next year. And with that, we'll not, the last slide, and we will open for questions. Oh, let me just say one more thing. Thanks for pulling that up, registration for the program. I was wondering where that went. It's February 1st through the 10th for the BU LINK.
And I'll just jump, chime in to say that we will be having that email go out tonight, so parents should see that soon.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much and for all this information. And I just want to point out one thing. If you think about all the new things that have been developed in the last almost 12 months, I think we started this whole thing on March 12th of last year. And you think that we have a new online model and we have new central hubs and we've come up with this, a whole new expertise on viruses. And we didn't hire any new district staff to do this. So it, and, and we didn't hire a lot of new teachers. So if you think about all the different jobs, each of the members of our staff and each of our teachers and our parent educators are doing now, it's pretty exhausting. It sounds exhausting to me. And I just want to thank everyone for the just intense work that's happening every day. It's, it is mind-boggling. So with that, I want to, also wanted to say, I did get to go to a saliva testing site with some kids. I took them and it just took a second. It was great. We got our results back, I think in 14 hours. So it was one of the fastest returns. We've done all sorts of tests around Boulder County, so it was great. All right. Questions? Richard, do you want to start?
Yeah, just to echo what you just said, Tina, I think our staff really deserve a lot of accolades in terms of what they've been doing and I truly, truly appreciate what they've done. And, and I just want to thank you for that presentation. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. I'm just, like you said, Tina, the fact that we're already trying to take lessons learned and apply them going forward, as you say, with no increase in staff is just awesome. So thank you for the presentation and for all your really wonderful thinking and support.
Donna?
Yep, just echoing all of that. Thank you for, for all of the staff. And I saw the big, the big push on the, on the website for hiring. So I'm sure there's a huge need. Thank you.
Kitty?
I don't have any questions. Just want to reiterate thanks that everyone else has already given.
Okay. Lisa?
I'll, I'll also reiterate all of that. And, and I do have a question, although I'm a little worried that I'm, Margaret, I'm worried you said this and I just missed it, so I'm so sorry. But my only defense is if I did, maybe someone watching did too. So if I was considering enrolling my kid in LINK, I think I would have about a million questions that I wanted to get answered. And, and what are we doing? Are we doing Let's Talk? Do we have a Q&amp;A website or how can people get all this info quickly?
I can actually jump in there and make do that. Oh, sorry, Margaret.
Okay, I was, I was actually going to say, we're actually doing a whole communication plan and I'll hand it over to Randy.
Yeah, yeah. Every time we have one of these big deals, we want to make sure that people are aware. So again, we're, we're going to put out an email today. It's got a lot of Q&amp;A in it. Because again, exactly, we know that there's going to be a lot of questions. And then on Thursday at 5 o'clock, I think it's 5, pretty sure it's 5, we have a Let's Talk and we will be welcoming questions. I believe that that link is also an email for tonight, but we'll be posting it on social media as well. And then continuing to welcome folks' feedback and, and questions as we go as well. As we get into that registration period, we would expect some, some back and forth for sure.
Okay, thanks. Well, it all sounds super exciting and I can't wait to, to tune in and, and have all my questions answered.
Okay, Stacy?
Hi, echo what everyone has said. Thank you so much for all your hard work and I don't have any questions either.
Okay, great. So then we can move on to our next item, which is public participation. And we'll take a break after that because the, our speakers have waited for some time. So I just want to acknowledge that public participation is, has been changed for the virtual meeting as it has been for quite some time now. And to sign up for public participation this way, you would want to contact Laura Schaefer and you would want to do that by noon of the day of the meeting. Okay, so that's how we would do that. You can alternatively send us an email. As I say every time, I read every email, I think all of our board members do. And, and we definitely take that feedback seriously. Just a reminder, please keep your comments to two minutes or less. When you get to 30 seconds, Laura will have a yellow card. When you have 10 seconds, you'll see an orange card. And at the end of your two minutes, your timer will sound and your microphone will be muted. So we have three speakers this evening and the first speaker is Chris Nelson.
Am I on, Laura?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. I have two teens in BVSD and am a SAC, DAC, and health monitor volunteer. I am also a fierce advocate for the choice of full-time in-person learning along with over 400 other community members. I would like to make several quick statements that I feel the BVSD community needs to be aware of. One, first and foremost, I am thankful that as of last week, both of my kids have finally met their teachers in person and get two days in school. The Brumfield High School and BHMS teachers have been nothing short of phenomenal. Thank you. Two, as has been stated many times, BVSD follows the guidance of public health. I entrust Dr. Anderson and the board will continue to follow public health guidance when they say it is time for all grades to return to school full-time. Three, multiple requests by myself and others for collaborative meetings with BVSD leadership have gone unanswered. They also do nothing to encourage their own students in providing feedback and suggestions. I encourage the district to be proactive and reciprocating in their communications. Receiving emails from the board to file a complaint if you are not satisfied is not productive. Four, keeping in mind the current quarter system, I encourage you to review District Policy IFBE2 regarding the rules for major modifications of existing programs and ask yourself if this policy was followed. Five, St. Brain is now allowing a select group of students, including seniors, the ability to be in school four days a week because of small class sizes. Is this a possibility for BVSD at the individual school level? Six, parent volunteers have so much to offer and are begging to help wherever needed. Boulder County Public Health has stated that there is no reason parents cannot volunteer at school. However, BVSD does not currently allow this. Seven, please provide clarification on Margaret's presentation she just did regarding P through, P, PK through 12, 2021, 2022 learning. Is it full-time, five days in-person planned or is it still only hybrid? Excellence in equity and all together for all students. That is all we are asking for. Thank you again for allowing our kids to be back in school.
Our next speaker is Kristen Stodden.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a parent of a senior and a sophomore. I wanted to say a quick thank you to my kids' Brumfield High School teachers, counselors, coaches, and administration. I don't know where my kids would be right now if it wasn't for the support, dedication, and kindnesses extended to them by their school staff over the course of this time. I'm also speaking tonight to express my sincere gratitude for the district bringing our high school students back to school two days a week currently. I can't adequately describe the change in my own kids as a result. My daughter especially has not been herself the last year due to the isolation. We have tried so many things as a family to bolster her with other supports, but none has been so effective as her being at school, even for just two days last week. She was glowing at the end of each day and even through the weekend. She said it's so much easier to learn when she's actually in class. I even noticed she took initiative to take herself for a long drive last night after a yoga class was canceled she had gone to. She's a new and still nervous driver and before this, she would have used the excuse to return home immediately. Just her experience reiterates to me that school is more than an education. It's also a place that supports teenage brain development, bonding with peers and supportive adults, developing self-confidence and growing into a future fully capable adult. My son is a senior. While not openly emotionally like my daughter, there are things that show us he is grieving the loss of the senior year he had hoped to experience. A growing lack of engagement with his online classes was becoming a huge problem for a kid who does tend to be disorganized but still has an overall 3.9 GPA. After a family discussion, followed by his two days in person last week, he has turned in his late work and one of his teachers shared with me how much more focused he was on his work during class at school. I hope these personal examples speak to how vital more in-person days are for our teenage students. They have been so adrift this year, craving the connection with their peers at school, the support of school staff, and the energy and engagement of learning material in the classroom. We as parents have been doing all that is within our power to support our teenagers at home, but we are not enough. We can't do it alone, not at their age and stage of development in life. I hope we can add more in-person days for our secondary students soon, knowing the benefits school holds for them. Thank you for this step forward.
Our next speaker is Steph Fries.
Okay, I'm good?
Yep.
Okay. So thank you for realizing the need and giving our secondary students the option to attend school in person at least two days a week. Last week, my freshman twins came home and shared with me a variety of information about their day. I heard about lunch, the hallway, parking lot, teachers, and other kids. While at home, I would have never gotten this information out of them, partially because they wouldn't have even had it. But more importantly, they shared with me how it was so much easier to learn Spanish and geography in person rather than over the computer. Today, I worked as a classroom monitor at the Brumfield High School. I saw kids interacting in the hall, smiling. They were not on devices during lunch and passing periods. They were truly talking to one another, which is rare because in the past, I'd seen them all before this, on their phones and devices. In the class, I handed out copies of what the kids were reading. It was an English class and they were to read it out loud. Those that were in class had no problem reading out loud, but the kids at home, you could hear they had microphone feedback. They were saying that the text was too small to read and there was background noises. I also heard the teacher helplessly pleading for the kids to do their work and saw that extra half hour of work time that was added to the class for them to do their work not really being used to do any work. The kids were on their phones, doing TikTok, Snapchat, and, and all of that, rather, rather than learning. So I feel if students were in the class with the teacher four days a week, there would be such a greater opportunity for them to actually learn and for the teacher to better prompt the kids to do their work and stay on task, as well as that teacher being there available for help. I would like to advocate for a full four-day return to class this spring. Maybe think out of the box. Half of the kids go in the morning, half of the kids go in the afternoon to keep the numbers down. But that's, that's all I've got. Thanks for at least making this two-day step forward.
Okay, that concludes public participation. Um, Board members, do you want to do board communication first or do you want to do with a, a break? Let's do board communication. Yeah?
Yeah, let's do that. I know the, the three parents that came and talked to us tonight, I think these are to be recognized and say, thank you very much, parents, for sharing with us with your thoughts. And also hearing from you, some of the wonderful things that you said about the kids going back to school. And, and hopefully soon, we'll learn more about getting our high school students or middle school students back four days a week. The other thing I want to do is I want to give Centauri High School a, a big shout-out for their work that they did in participation on Martin Luther King Day Junior. I participated in their car raid, which attracted like about 200, 250 automobiles that drove around Lafayette, honking their horns and driving into the Centauri parking lot. So thank you, Centauri, for allowing all this to happen in your parking lot. And also, I did stick around to hear the poem, but I know that our esteemed colleague Kathy read a poem. And thank you, Kathy, for doing that.
Okay, Kathy?
Thank you, Richard. Yeah, I was going to talk about the Martin Luther King Day celebration at Centauri and then Lafayette because if you ever need to be reminded that our future is in really good hands with our students, all you need to do is show up at an event like that and listen to the enthusiasm and the talent and the passion that those students had and the speeches that they gave on what was a bitter cold day, I thought at least. And they all looked like it was 90 degrees out while I was shivering. So Lisa and Richard and I were there. Thank you to Lafayette for including us. And anyway, it was a great event and I, it, it just instills hope in a time when it's hard to find hope sometimes to just go listen to the voices of our students. And I just want to say thank you to the parents who came. And I just want to reiterate, because I think it gets lost, that I don't know anybody on this call or anybody in the district who doesn't want in-person learning. We all support it. We all think that's our goal, to the extent that parents want it. But we're in a pandemic and we're doing the best that we can in trying to meet those needs. So I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we all support that. Sometimes we get accused of somehow not wanting that. And I don't want people to think that. We're trying as hard as we can, but we have to follow the metrics and we have to follow what Boulder County Public Health tells us is the best path forward. And if the, the variants don't end up being as bad as I think we're fearing, then I think we're headed in a really good direction for getting more student contact with teachers. So thank you for the kind words about our staff. Thank you for taking the time to come and talk. And we'll all get through this together, but just remember that that's our goal as well.
Okay, Donna?
Yep, thank you to the parents that spoke tonight on giving those concrete examples of how the kids need to, to be in that brick and mortar setting and we're looking forward to the time that they can do that more often. I was at Boulder High School today and today was a bitter cold day. And when I was there about 1:30, it was, I think, 22 degrees. And I talked with one of the teachers there and they said that their class didn't have one absence of the kiddos that, but in days gone by, a bitter cold day like today, a lot of the kids might have stayed home. So it shows the desire and determination of the kids and, and their desire to just want to be there. So anyway, it was a, a good to see all the kids walking around with, coming out of their classes in the parking lot semi-full. That's all.
Okay, Kitty?
Um, I do want to thank the parents who came and spoke to us. I appreciate your input and, and of course, I read your emails. And I'm really glad Kathy, Richard, and Lisa could go to the MLK Day event. I couldn't do that because I was working, so it's nice to know other board members were able to be there. I want to reiterate what Kathy said about all of us wanting kids back in school as soon as possible. So I don't have anything else to say.
Okay, Lisa? I can't hear you.
How's that? Okay, I was double muted. Thank you to the parents who, who called in tonight and who emailed us. I also just wanted to say a little bit about Lafayette. It, it was fantastic. Kathy, you did a great job representing us with your Langston Hughes reading. And I, I think the best thing I can say about it is that it was like 28 degrees outside and we couldn't really get out of our cars. And despite that, my four-year-old and my seven-year-old hung out for two and a half hours and could only be compelled to leave when they realized there were no restrooms on site. So I had a great time, but my kids did too. The, the performances were amazing. The singers were fantastic. They had little treat bags for all the kids with like pens and shirts. It was just really amazing to see what a thoughtful and, and well-organized day it was. And I was really glad I got to, I got to go by.
Hey, Stacy?
I want to echo what everyone said about our speakers. Thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. I wanted to touch on something that Margaret already talked about, which is that the season B test of sports has started and want to put a shout-out to all those athletic directors to make it happen and Boulder County Health and Brumfield County Health. And just wanted to say good luck. A lot of us didn't think that this would ever happen. So just want to say good luck to all the athletes and to stay safe so that... So just want to say good luck to all the athletes and to stay safe so that you can have a whole season. And that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to thank Kathy for reiterating that ever since we developed the five-color-coded reentry plan, the goal has been to get to green, where we're full in person for five days. And that is where we're headed, based on our environment and what we're able to do and our resources available to us. And I just wanted to comment on a couple other things that are a little bit left-field, but things that are pretty important to me. A couple weeks ago, some positive things happened, in my opinion, that align with my values, and one was that the 1776 Commission was revoked. And that was really important to me, as someone who felt that that whole concept was flawed and the scholarly nature of it was not in the right direction. So I'm glad that that is a type of curriculum that's not going to be imposed onto our district. I do believe in local control of the curriculum and didn't appreciate that effort. I also want to, you know, we had a lot of conversations about types of training, and there was some thought that there would be limitations on diversity and anti-racism training from the federal government, and that's no longer the case. So I felt good that we'll be able to proceed with those without any fear, that that's considered inappropriate by where some of our funding sources come from. And I'd like to hear that there was a reaffirmation of transgender rights. Boulder Valley was one of the first school districts to pass a policy on transgender rights, and that was another, I felt like, a step forward for our community as a whole. The other piece, which is interesting, and it took us back to a meeting, and Richard, I just can't remember when it was, but we were talking about the language on how we refer to non-citizens as illegal aliens, and whether we had the latitude to change that language in our policy. I think it's actually being done, but that is being formally addressed right now to permanently change that language to something that I think is more supportive, and using the word "non-citizen" in lieu of "illegal aliens." So those are just a few things. I also want to remind everyone that we have part of our Boulder delegation is Judy Ammavili. She has a wonderful mental health spirit and background, and probably someone who we as elected officials should be reaching out to and sharing our concerns for our district and making sure she understands that we would always appreciate more support, and that's something that we should probably be thinking about a little bit. So that's all I have. Shall we take a break? Yes? Okay, so we will see everyone back just a bit after eight. Does that sound okay? All right, thanks. Great. So let's carry on, and we have our first item is an information item. It's the 2020-21 State Supplemental Budget Update with our own Bill Sutter.
Thank you. I have a few slides that I will run through here. Let's see. Does that look right?
Looks good.
All right. So, need to get my screen back up here. There we go. So each year, the legislature adopts a supplemental budget, addresses for K-12 education the alignment of the student counts that happen in October and are finalized in November and December. And so the legislature comes back into session and puts forth a bill to align the School Finance Act with what happens from a student count standpoint. Sometimes it requires additional dollars into the formula. Sometimes the state is able to recoup dollars back. So this year, the legislature heard, typically it would be kind of done by now, but since the legislature went into sort of a recess after a couple of days of the session, it won't be finalized until they come back in February. But there was a report given by Legislative Council staff on the proposals. So what I'll run through first is that proposal and the options that were presented, and then also a little bit of the governor's revised budget, his revised budget for '21-'22 that was also included in that proposal. So there were options presented. I'll run through those in just a second real quick. For the School Finance Act and the supplemental budget, there was a staff recommendation. These are put forward by the Legislative Council staff. These are the folks that work for the legislature, and they continually report on school finance and whatnot. So this presentation was made to the Joint Budget Committee. They made the approval and what those impacts are, and then I'll have a slide on the fiscal impacts for Boulder. So this is the chart that was presented that shows those options. So the first column, the original appropriation, so this is what was approved back in June, constant budget stabilization factor, so that was one of the options. Looking down at the bottom of that column, that reduces, would have reduced by over $80 million, the amount of money in K-12. The next option, a constant state share, so this is the amount of money that the state would put in. Didn't change the total amount in the system, but certainly wouldn't have benefited K-12. Constant statewide average per pupil funding, so also not a benefit to K-12. That's just the overall average amount per pupil. Something that has been done in the past, like these are all options that have been used in the past. So the last one, the constant total program. So what that is, is taking the amount that was authorized in total program funding back in June and using that as the total amount available. And because of the lowered overall statewide student count by something north of 3% drop in students, it actually increased the per pupil funding, and that was the recommendation of Legislative Council staff, is to keep that constant total program funding. It's a little over $45 or just under $46 per pupil additional funding to districts, and it's a cost of almost $41 million to the state, so additional resources that are going in to support that. Part of that is because of a drop in the local property tax support for K-12. And so just the way the formula works out, it's an additional investment into K-12. So the committee, Joint Budget Committee, approved all of the staff's recommendations, additional $41 million of state general fund money to offset that decline in local revenues and to maintain that total program funding at the level assumed. That's $7.24 billion, an increase of $45.61 on average per pupil. And also, the recommendation also included additional funds for rural schools. It's $25 million from the Rural Schools Cash Fund. I believe this is a component of the tobacco tax that was just passed this fall, which is current law, and so that's why it was included. But it wasn't included as a budget item because it hadn't passed the state. And there's two more years of that funding going to rural schools, and increases for the next two years as well. So for Boulder Valley, it's $4.2 million additional funding as compared to what that original budget adoption by the state and that estimate by the state. And also, it's about $4.2 million more than what is included in the revised budget that's up for adoption tonight. It has not been adopted into law, so we have not included these additional resources in the revised budget. Certainly, the board could have passed an additional appropriation prior to June 30th at any time. Whenever additional resources are coming into a district, the board always has the option to do that. However, because we have appropriated district reserves, fund balance, things like that, there's adequate appropriation, budget appropriation, spending authority. So those additional resources, I don't believe really need to be authorized in an appropriation in order to make it for the remainder of the year. Next, the governor's revised budget for next year, so not the current year. The changes that were proposed or brought forward reduces support for K-12 due to a lower inflation amount and lower pupil counts than what was included in the governor's original proposal. It does have a very slight increase local support, so additional property taxes estimated coming in. So that also drops the state's support. Growing the state education fund balance and a suggestion about school finance reform. So for the reduced support, I had reported a prior meeting that the number was 1.7% for the inflation rate that the governor had used. That was actually the projection by Legislative Council staff back in September. But Governor Polis had actually used a 2.5% inflation rate when he was proposing his budget. And so the actual inflation rate actually came in at 2%, so it's less resources that need to go in next year. And then those student count and at-risk counts reduced that total amount from what he had proposed in November by $168 million. That estimated increase in the local revenues from property taxes, additional $3.7 million, again, as compared to the November proposal. So that's a total reduction in K-12 support at the state level of $172 million as compared to the November proposal. Increasing the state education fund reserve, so there was a targeted balance of $140 million in November for the end of next year. This new proposal increases that target amount by $320 million to a total of $460 million, so a pretty significant increase in the state education fund's balance. The proposal is intended to keep those funds available within the education realm for use in fiscal year '22-'23, so two years out, and reduce the risk of increasing the budget stabilization factor in that year. I believe there will be lots of conversations about just how much needs to be remaining in the state aid fund, and whether some of those resources should be released to districts sooner and allow districts to make those decisions as to whether to hold on to it themselves or to spend it as necessary to support students and staff. For school finance reform, nothing too specific, but these are a couple of quotes out of the report. "In addition, the request proposes that the General Assembly use any additional funding beyond the amount required for budget stabilization factor reduction as proposed. To support school finance reforms to improve equity in the school finance system." And then the request also proposes that the General Assembly consider using any additional funds for quoted reforms similar to the proposal developed by the 2019 Interim School Finance Committee. This was a bit shocking for people to read and see, that it was being suggested, that interim school finance committee met for like three years and wasn't able to come to an agreement as to what the right course of action was. But this proposal is suggesting that maybe some of those ideas should be used. And as a reminder, we're still, given the proposal that's on the table for next year, still $572 million of a negative factor, budget stabilization factor, and some suggestions that maybe that number should be reduced further before conversations about how to redirect School Finance Act dollars in next year. So that is it for the update on the supplemental budget and the governor's proposal.
Okay. Bill, thank you so much. And at this point in time, this board does not need to do anything, is that correct?
That is correct. The adoption of the budget for next year, I mean, for the current year, the revised budget is up on consent. Just don't care in here. There we go. So it's up for consent. So these changes that are proposed, they will take place. The revenue will come in. It will be fund balanced at the end of the year and available for use next year.
Okay. Any questions? I can see everyone. Kathy?
Well, I don't want to go first. Does Richard have questions first?
Richard, do you want to go first?
Please, Kathy. I don't have any questions. The only, just a con, well, maybe I do have a question. What does that improved equity in the school finance system mean?
It's, well, the suggestion that the School Finance Act should be improved to direct resources to students or the characteristics of students versus the characteristics of a district was part of the suggestion that was brought forward from the superintendent's school finance proposal from a couple of years ago. But it also included a fairly significant increase in the resources in that School Finance Act. So if the resources were to be redirected to more funding for at-risk students, students in poverty, second language students, special ed students, gifted and talented students, if there's not more resources in the system, that means something has to come away from districts, the resources that districts are currently receiving. So there's no specific proposal, and this has been studied quite thoroughly multiple times without a real solution getting very far.
Wow, okay. Okay, Kathy, now?
So I have just a couple of questions. The supplemental bill, the supplemental proposal, Bill, required for about 106 districts to take mid-year rescissions. We just happen to be in the calculations, one of those districts that doesn't have to take a mid-year rescission. And the current proposal is to make those districts take the mid-year rescission, correct?
Correct.
Can you explain why it is that Boulder doesn't have to take a mid-year rescission?
It's the calculation of the School Finance Act, the methodology, the loss of students, how averaging works, how big a drop a particular district may or may not have had. So there's a lot of different factors into it. One of the, attached to the agenda item was the full report, and there's a graph in there that shows the change in the number of students versus the change in the student count. And so the headcount of students dropped further than the funded FTE did, and that's because of the averaging, the way averaging works. So that, I don't know all the details of which districts are dropping and why.
So if I understand it correctly, Bill, for next year's budget, we, the governor is not willing to do a whole harmless on funded, on pupil count. So we have to budget to the lower number, and by putting that number, by putting money into the state education fund doesn't help us, because we don't have access to that for this next budget cycle. Is that a fair statement?
It could be. I mean, that would take the, the legislature would need to make the change and target a lower fund balance. But if the governor's proposal happened as suggested, that means the '21-'22 school year, fiscal year, would end with 460 million. 22 school year, fiscal year would end with 400 and whatever that number, 460 million dollars in the ed fund, uh, available to be used the following year. So, um, by putting those dollars in there, it, it does not, um, mean that they couldn't be used, but they're, they're, they're not being suggested to be used at this point in time.
But, so my point, Bill, is that I think the common thinking is that students are going to probably hopefully come back in September, and they're not giving us the budget to be able to staff for that, for this coming. I'm worried about this budget year that we're going to be starting the budget conversations for. Is that a correct statement?
Um, they will have to true up for the students that come back. So they'll do the same supplemental budget process in January of next year if more come back than, than currently.
Right. But we, we sign contracts and make those hiring decisions now. So we're going to have to, we're in a position in Boulder to probably be able to pull on our reserves if we need to. But the governor's not giving any recognition to the fact that students may be coming back in the fall and that we should be able to budget for that. Is that a fair statement?
Um, I mean, a, a district is always, uh, has the option of making their budget based on what they believe their student count will be. There's a, a rationale to rely, uh, somewhat heavily on what the, the state proposal is. But if a district believes that they will have more students come back, uh, they should be funded for those students. Um, maybe not initially, but in the, in the mid-year, uh, true-up process, they should be funded for them.
So they get, they would have to wait until February-ish to get that money and just hope that they, in, because it's not a guarantee in the supplemental that they'll do that.
That is true.
Um, I, I appreciate what you said. So Tina, I think we need to at least be thinking about what we want to do if the governor wants to follow through on a school finance reform, because I have a, I have a pretty strong feeling we would not come out on the winning side of that. Um, and I think we need to pay pretty careful attention to that and just be thinking about what our strategy would be if in fact that conversation goes forward. As, as you said, Bill, it's not very clear what he means by distributing more equitably. Um, that, that's in the eye of the beholder, as we know. It could be construed 100 different ways, but I think we just need to pay really careful attention to that. Um, and then one last question. Um, any conversation about increasing our mill levy or being told, is there a shall or a may conversation still going on around whether we have to increase our total program mill this year? Or whether we're going to have to use our mill levy override dollars to get to the 27? What are the conversations around that?
Haven't heard anything recently. Um, the, the question about whether the legislature will take that, um, declarative action and say shall, uh, versus putting it back on districts and say they may increase, uh, their, their mill levy, uh, and force districts to go out to an election, a local election, to get their School Finance Act funding, um, I think is just a, uh, well, a poor choice of legislative action, uh, to do something like that, after all the conversations that have been happening on this for quite some time. Um, so I'm hopeful that the, the end result will be, uh, legislation that is, districts shall increase their mill levy up to some amount, but by one a year or whatever it is, uh, to get to that maximum of 27. Um, the impact is fairly minimal, uh, on Boulder, uh, if we have to go in that direction.
It'd be one mill?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, thanks, Bill.
Yeah.
All right. Don, any questions?
Um, just to, um, explaining something to me, make sure I understand. Part of our, um, loss is, uh, the declining enrollment trajectory, which we kind of planned for, prepared for, and been, you know, uh, looking into that. But part of it was, um, the parents that purposely left the district for other options, be it private or homeschooling. Do we know what the, uh, because those are the parents that might come back, the others may not. Do, do we have numbers on that?
We've got our initial projections, uh, and so I believe that was included in the strategic financial plan update, uh, on the projected number of students. And if not, then it's still being finalized, uh, but we were projecting, uh, a return of some portion of those students. Um, it's a pretty, um, a challenging, uh, formula to try to come up with how many of those, that, how many students that really is. Uh, I think we are in the situation where we will be retaining more staff than maybe the projected numbers would say. So we will be, uh, prepared for more students coming back because we don't want to, uh, reduce the number of teachers that we have for what might be a, a one-year, uh, or projected one-year, additional one-year, uh, dip in the number of students. Uh, because of the hiring process, it really doesn't make sense to, to eliminate, uh, good staff, um, just to need to hire them back the following year. So, um, it's a, it's a challenging projection because it's just, uh, there's nothing to compare it to, uh, from our, our past history of, of what the actions people will take.
Okay. Thanks. That was part of my thought process, is that hiring process coming up and, um, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Kitty?
Uh, no questions. Thanks.
All right. Lisa? Okay. Stacy? All right. I had a really quick question. Um, when we count, uh, the revenue for a student who comes in through online is less than one who attends a brick and mortar school, is that correct? And will a BU Link student be just, uh, counted as an online student from a funding perspective?
Uh, I think that still needs to be determined, uh, as to, um, how those students are transmitted. Uh, are they, um, transmitted as their, their homeschool? Or are they transmitted as part of Boulder Universal's multi-district online, um, uh, registration with CDE? CDE sees BU as a multi-district online school. Uh, and so, uh, depending on how those students are transmitted makes the difference in how the funding, uh, is supported. This year, um, districts made different choices as to how they registered some students in online programs versus in brick and mortar, versus in remote learning, versus, uh, synchronous, asynchronous. There was, um, a lot of flexibility granted by, uh, CDE. So that's definitely something that we need to, um, be wary of, uh, as we look into how the, the, how those students are recorded and submitted.
Okay.
What their schedule says.
Thank you. Uh, Kathy?
Good night. So, Bill, what you said to Donna is what I was trying to get at. If we're going to carry forward staff for students that we don't yet have in the system with the hope that they'll come back, right? But the state's not going to fund us for those students. So what we're hoping then is that somehow with the supplemental, that maybe the state will pay us. So we'll, we'll basically be floating the state until they decide whether they're going to reimburse us in February. Is that right?
Right. And the, the condition might be that the students don't come back.
Right.
Some will, there's no question, right? We'll, we will have a return, uh, some uptick in the number of students. If the number isn't as great, uh, then we can start making decisions, uh, for the out years, uh, but we certainly have, uh, staff turnover, right? Uh, retirements that happen every year, uh, so maybe let some of that, uh, naturally matriculate through the system, uh, for another year. Uh, maybe we don't hire as many new folks in that following year, uh, but we don't lay off current employees, um, for that potential dip.
Great. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Um, everyone all set to move on to the next item? Great. Uh, so our next item is a CBAC update, and thanks in advance for the CBAC people who've been waiting.
See, I'll just, thank you, Tina. Uh, Scott Stevens, our Director of Bond Planning, and John Stanton, our Chair of Citizen, our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, uh, they're both joining us to provide our quarterly update. And Scott will also give you a brief update with what, on what has occurred, uh, in the New Vista working group. And just as a reminder, uh, we will bring that back to the board in February, uh, late February. So with that, Scott, turning over to you.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, good evening, Board President Mark Cast, uh, Superintendent Anderson and members of the school board. It's, uh, my pleasure to be doing our quarterly update, uh, of the Building for Student Success Program. And, uh, to date, we are nearing the end of our 2014 bond program. Um, it's good to take a little step back and see what we've accomplished. In just over six years, we've completed 60 of the 63 original master plan projects with current expenses totaling 625 million, uh, which puts us at 92% complete. Uh, not only do our buildings look better, but they function better. Uh, construction continues at the Halcyon School, the Rec Field House. Uh, construction has started for the air conditioning at four of the seven schools. Work on the two-story addition at Uni Hill was completed in December, and students are using the new space, uh, when they returned, um, at the beginning of January. Construction of the remainder of the scope of work for that school will continue this summer. The Justice High School project received bids on January 14th of this year, uh, with construction anticipated to start at spring break. Uh, the proposed construction contract for Justice High School will be brought to the board for approval, uh, I believe at the next February meeting. So New Vista, uh, this is the update Rob was talking about. We've had a convened a working group of, um, teachers, uh, students, uh, community members, and discussed, uh, many aspects of the New Vista project. We met three times, uh, the group, um, and also CBAC members were included in that. At the first meeting, staff and the architect shared the background of the project as well as information about the current condition of the building. Kirk Quitter, the principal, explained the educational program. The architect led the group through some visioning exercises, which, with questions such as what defines success or what would you hope for as an outcome for this process? And why is New Vista High School an important school for Boulder Valley? At the second meeting, the architect reviewed the outcomes of the visioning process and staff responded to the questions the group had submitted. The architect led the group through exploring four possible paths, including, um, and those are the A, B, C, D items you see on the screen in front of you. Uh, so these items were including proceed with the master plan, scope of work. Uh, B would be expand the scope of work to include an extensive renovation. Item C was build a new building onsite. And item four was build a new building offsite. And this matrix we put together to help the group understand a lot of aspects related to that, including costs, maintenance costs, schedules, et cetera. Our last meeting, uh, scheduled working group was last night, and we discussed costs and funding options. In February, members from the working group and staff will present the recommendation to the school board. I believe we're looking at February 23rd. The Halcyon Project is underway and scheduled to complete Phase One near the end of March. This will allow students and staff to occupy a portion of the new building while some of the old building is demolished and a portion renovated. Overall, the project is scheduled to be, uh, if you have a chance to drive by and look at the structure, it is very impressive view of the new roof lines matching one of the old roof lines and gives a great look at the previous architecture done there. The cafeteria addition is complete at Uni Hill and is being utilized by the school. Work will be ramping up this summer to complete the renovation work to the intermediate building, including innovation work, paint, carpet, and upgraded lights and bathrooms. Our sustainability and energy, energy team will be providing an update in April. Uh, tonight I'll give you a brief overview of information that was presented to CBAC in November. Thanks to improvements such as low-flow water fixtures and irrigation controls, water use overall has decreased from the 2008 baseline. To date, we have diverted 51% of construction waste. This means slightly more than half of the waste generated from construction has been recycled or otherwise diverted from the landfill. Through the bond program, our sustainable transportation infrastructure expanded with new electrical, electric vehicle charging being installed at 50 sites and hundreds of new bike racks being installed. Another great accomplishment of this bond is that many products created or enhanced outdoor learning spaces or provided additional shade structures. These features are perhaps of even greater value now, given the work we are doing to encourage schools to use outdoor spaces in general, maybe not today, uh, but also in light of the current health crisis. All projects were required to design to improve indoor environmental quality. This includes using low-emitting materials such as paint and sealants. Improving energy efficiency was a priority goal of the bond program and was supported with features such as new boilers, better insulation, and LED lighting, to name just a few. Overall, we are 24% more efficient than our 2008 baseline. A large portion of the educational facilities master plan was directed at replacing worn-out equipment and materials and updating systems. Through this work, we were able to reduce custodial maintenance time and expense. Materials such as no-wax lux, luxury vinyl tile or LED lighting that needs to be replaced less frequently require less custodial time, allowing them to focus on other tasks such as cleaning. HVAC controls were also updated in the buildings that were still using the old pneumatic controls. We switched to a direct digital control system, or DDC. This allows for improved programming control within the building automation system and less equipment being programmed at each individual site. DDC controls not only assist us in normal operations, they also enable us to make quick on-the-spot changes to programming during environmental changes such as smoke from wildfires or current COVID-19 conditions. Improvements to the grounds around the schools such as irrigation and synthetic turf fields save water and maintenance time. The new fields and playground equipment boost safety and playtime. Upgrades to the building envelopes such as new roofs, new windows, and electrical service upgrades extend the life of these building envelopes by 15 to 30 years. At this time, I'm going to turn the program over to John Stanton, our CBAC co-chair, and he'll give you some insights on the, the last committee meeting. John?
Scott, um, our last meeting was in September. Um, we've only met once since we were, or actually, we met in November. We've only met once since we, um, came and talked to you last in September. We held that one virtually like most of our meetings now. Um, we actually talked about the New Vista project. Um, Scott mentioned that, uh, we were asked at that meeting, meeting for volunteers for the new working group, and three of our members graciously stepped up and, um, joined that, that working group. Um, and I'm looking forward to our next meeting to hear a little bit more about it from them. Um, we actually talked a lot about the current construction, uh, construction project updates, and we did our first, as we, as mentioned, the performance updates, and we looked at energies, sustainability, operational efficiencies, et cetera. Um, I know you guys are going to get it. I was very impressed by some of the numbers and some of the dollars that were being saved by some of these upgrades. Um, at each meeting, we look at the financial reports, we go really deep into the numbers, um, and the staff presents a forecast, but then projected recommendations from the premium funds. The financial information we were sharing tonight was updated through January 11th. Expenditures to date, as mentioned, were 625 million. Outstanding contractual commitments at this time are 21 million, and we have 31 million left, um, in expected expenditures. Our next meeting is in March, which I assume we're going to be looking at New Vista again. Um, and we've actually already started the conversation since we're at 92% complete on what a final report, um, may look like, at least in format and tone and content and stuff like that. So we're already starting to work on the planning, at least, for the final report in March. And that's all I have, unless you guys have questions.
All right. Thank you for all your work, and thank you for continuing, uh, to volunteer with CBAC, John. That's great. Uh, we really appreciate it. Uh, any questions? I'll, actually, I'll start with Richard.
Uh, thank you very much for the report. Uh, just a question on New Vista. Uh, when, when the group met, what kind of, uh, reception or, uh, conversations did they have around the new building?
Rob, you want me to answer that, Rob?
Go ahead, Scott, if you want to address it, then I can jump in.
Sure. Thinking of that question, Ms. Garcia, the group was actually pretty enthusiastic about a couple of options. One was the build a new building on the existing site. I think that would garner the most interest. But there was also some some interest in a major renovation project. So we also had the opportunity to take some tours with some people who hadn't seen the building recently or weren't as familiar with it. And they got to see some of the overall issues that we've presented to the board before and discussed before. So I think it kind of opened their eyes to what the existing condition of the building is.
Richard, we had our final working group meeting last night, actually, and we will be summarizing that in preparation for our February twenty-third work session. But we'll give you an update prior to that, based on some of the kind of the initial feedback that we got before we come to the board.
Thanks, Rob. I didn't mean to kind of get ahead of the process here, but thank you.
Was a little bit of a cliffhanger at the end, though. Sorry. Kathy?
Yeah, I just have a question about Slide Four.
Did you have a specific question, Kathy, or do you want to...
Yeah, I just thought it might be...
...move up Slide Four real quick?
If we can't put it up, that's fine. I just want to make sure I understand what it's saying. So if we do what we're currently scheduled to do, aside from the fact that it's the least expensive, it's the most expensive option for ongoing operations, as the least does not meet educational goals as opposed to any of the other options, and has a medium impact on students and schools. So it appears that our current option, if you look at the matrix, is the least beneficial for the students at New Vista. Am I reading that correctly?
You are reading that correctly, yes.
Okay, thanks.
And this is somewhat of an incomplete matrix. This matrix has now been filled in with first costs, and we've added a column over to the right-hand side. So again, we will bring this back to you and dive deep into the details, kind of what the working group really looked at. We will ask the working group to present to the board at that February twenty-third work session, along with a student that was involved. We had multiple students involved in this, and we would like kind of their opinion and what they learned through the process, so.
So I just want to say thank you to you and to Scott, because you added this to your plate when you already like had very full plates, and you did it on a really short timeline. So thank you, and thank you to CBOC and to the members who stepped up and the students. I really, I think it sounds like a really sound process, and I look forward to hearing what the results are. But I just want to say thank you, because I know that this was the last thing you needed to add to your plate, but you did it with grace, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just real quick, publicly, I want to thank Scott Stevens and all of our project managers. Trying to construct in the middle of a pandemic in a short timeframe is, it's amazing what they did this summer. And I don't get enough, we don't get an opportunity enough to thank them. But Scott, job well done. You brought a lot of money home in completing the work in the middle of a pandemic. So nice work. Thank you.
Hey, Donna?
No, I just want to reiterate the thanks, and I don't have questions. Thank you.
All right. Kitty?
Yeah, thank you for doing this. I'm really interested in the proposals for New Vista. And then the question I have on the slide that says there's forecasted remaining expenditures is thirty-one million. So does that, is that on for the projects that are still under construction plus New Vista?
So that thirty-one million does include all of the remaining projects, the three original projects from the master plan that we're working on, Uni-Hill, Halcyon, and does include approximately twelve million dollars of unspent money for New Vista. And then also the Rec Field House and air conditioning projects. So that it's the remainder of the projects that we've programmed all of the money remaining now, except for New Vista.
So what was the original plan for, what was the cost of the original plan, sorry, for New Vista?
So for New Vista, with, after inflation was added, which we did to all projects, we ended up with a construction budget of just over twelve million dollars. And so we're still holding that money. That's unspent money.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Lisa?
No questions, but I appreciate the approach of the New Vista working group. I really thought that matrix was interesting, and I'm looking forward to seeing the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Stacy?
I echo what everyone, the thanks of everybody, and I don't have any questions.
All right. It sounds like we're ready to move on. Thanks so much for your presentation, and we look forward to hearing back from the New Vista working group. So our next item is the Transportation Efficiency and Equal School Day Assessment.
Thank you, Board President Mark, with board members. I'm going to go ahead and kick this off. Rob, if you want to go ahead and pull up the slides that you'll work through. So board members, we're going to be talking today about work that started from, from, everything that I can gather, started in, maybe even before this, but at a minimum started in 2013, so eight years ago. And so I just would, before we get going, you know, I think that as we have started to announce this, this got some coverage in the newspaper this morning because we posted our slides. I just want to kind of walk the public and the board through how much work, effort, and energy has gone into where we are today, which is a really great place, and we're almost there. So I know that there are lots and lots of people in, on our current team, on our current board, on previous boards, on previous district leaders that have spent a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in this idea of the equal school day. So in April sixteenth, twenty thirteen, at the time, the Board of Education entered into an MOU with the BVSD Administration and BVEA to talk about this idea of how do we use time as a variable and asset in the development of, at the time, what was called the Ideal School Day. So this became a big effort that was part of the success effect, which was the previous version of the current strategic plan altogether for all students. There was a committee formed, I think the term is a design advisory team, to work through this idea of the Ideal School Day. Teachers, administrators, district staff, board members, lots of folks involved. This came back to the board in a formal memo in September of 2015, where one of the ideas in the Ideal School Day was a designative length of school day by level for every school. At that point in time, the idea was, the idea was to begin implementation in August of 2016. So at that point, you know, continued to work, I think, some more presentations. There was a superintendent transition, an interim superintendent. As I came on on July, as part of my hundred-day plan, I spent a lot of time engaging with our staff, our community. And time and time again, this idea of the Ideal School Day came up. And so we put that to the board to speak to in October of 2018. We brought in a work session where we talked about this idea that the Ideal School Day group had recommended a seven-hour day for elementary schools, recommended some other things. Board directed us at this time, okay, go work up some options for us to consider. As a reminder, board members, those of you that are on board at the time, in January fifteenth of 2019, we brought forward three options of where we could go in regards to this idea of beginning to align and regulate the amount of time elementary, middle, and high school students were learning, and really standardizing those instructional minutes. We gave several options. Option one, move high school start times back from where they were at the time to eight o'clock. And then the following year, begin to start to align the middle school and high school times. Option two was to move the high school times to eight-thirty. And then in the following year, for elementary and middle school. And then option three was wait a year. And then in 2021, go ahead and make the change for the high school start times, elementary school day for a seven-hour day, and align those things. At that point, the board directed us to go with option two. So in January of twenty nineteen, as the board will recall, the community will recall, we began to engage our community on what would be the things that we would need to do to mitigate any of the concerns, but begin to start to deliver on this work that had been happening for almost a decade. We were able to do that, engage our community, have lots of good conversations, feel like that their input helped us make our plan stronger. Implemented late start times for high school at eight-thirty, which by all accounts has been a great success. Lots of positive feedback there. And at that time, we planned to begin to plan for the 2021 year, school year, to do what we're talking to you about today, which is this implementation of the seven-hour elementary school day. March twelfth happened in 2020, we ran into the pandemic. Obviously, plans changed. We presented to the board and to the public a lot of what you'll see tonight on May twelfth in 2020. And at that point, we said we're going to need another year to wait to start to move to this equal school day. We're going to try to, you know, look at some pilot programs and opt into busing, some RTD passes, as opposed to running some routes in a way to kind of be more efficient. Many of those plans, and I'm sure Rob will speak to this, because of the pandemic, didn't come to fruition. But we received some feedback that for some folks that, you know, this is, they didn't understand where this was coming from. And I think I want to share all this to the board and to the public to say, you know, we're really close on delivering on work that's been hard work, that's been going on in this district for quite a while. And so for some folks, this may be a refresher. For some folks, this may be new. But please know and understand, this is not something that we developed in the past couple of months to bring to you. This is work that we've committed to, we're working to deliver on. And so we've got a lot of great information. Sorry for taking so much time to introduce this, but I thought it was just really important to set some context. So with that, Rob, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Dr. Anderson, thank you for that history. Really excited and proud to lead this work. I co-led the changes to the high school bell times with Dr. Crespo, and I have co-led this work with Robin Fernandez, Area Superintendent of the East Network, who will be joining me here in just a little bit. You know, tonight, as Dr. Anderson said, we're going to be presenting our plan to provide equal instructional time for all students. It doesn't seem like there's ever been a better time than now to implement this in the 2122 school year, when we were looking for additional instructional time for our students. So with that, you know, for years, school start times, start and end times have varied by school and by level throughout this district, creating disparity through the system. An equal learning time, really, for most of our students, if you think about it, at the elementary level. So these disparities in start and end times have created inefficiencies in district-wide services such as transportation. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Rob and let her talk a little bit about the history and the progress we've made for this.
Thank you, Rob, and good evening, everyone. It really is exciting for me to be here this evening, talking with you about the Equal School Day, because I have been part of this conversation since 2014. So it's exciting to be with you this evening, talking about continuing this work. So as a reminder, when the Ideal School Day Task Force was created in 2014, that was co-created and co-led by both BVEA and school leadership. Because at that time, we were having a lot of conversation about guaranteed viable curriculum across the system. The truth is that a child in BVSD should not just be lucky to land in a school where they may have a longer school day than a student in another school. And a longer school day, as we know, especially at the elementary level, can add up to a differential of thirteen school days. And the truth is, not only every student needs and deserves not only just a guaranteed and viable curriculum, but even more importantly, a guaranteed and viable educational experience, regardless of who they are and what school they attend. So the work of the task force went beyond what we are discussing this evening. So in the 2016 recommendations, they were not just about school start and end times. I think we could probably call that the skeleton or the backbone of the school day. But it also included recommendations about the teaching and learning experiences that occurred during the day. The good thing is that since that work was grounded in best practice, much of that best practice is still very current and is reflected clearly in our current strategic plan. However, the most foundational work of this is a movement to a standard length of school day at elementary. Because with that structure in place, we have the ability to implement the cornerstones for the strategic plan in a way that guarantees the same high-quality experiences for all students, regardless of what school they are in. So as Dr. Anderson said before, we know that we were able to implement a big piece of that work, starting in 2019, with the change in high school start times from eight-thirty and the change in high school end time to three forty-five PM. And so that was some significant progress, and we are excited to continue that work. So with that, I will pass it back to you, Rob.
Thanks, Robin. Just as a reminder, in 2019, when we made the shift at the high schools, we made a commitment to you to come back with a plan to address this disparity in learning. So in 2019, the transportation, we assembled the transportation team to pick up this discussion, to develop and recommend school start and end times for elementary, middle, and PKA levels. High schools were already set to provide that equal learning time and to standardize professional learning time for school staff as suggested by the equal, or the Ideal School Day Task Force. So school day schedules are strongly connected to bus routes, as most of you know. The group also worked directly with the transportation consultant, actually, two consultants, to look for ways to make busing more efficient as we're working through this process. So as you can see on the slide, the team members that made up of the steering committee consisted of principals or APs from each grade level, the vice president of BVEA, and then leadership from district departments. Throughout, the process consisted of four steering committees and one subcommittee meeting over four months. Next slide. We established the following goals at our first meeting. The first one was to standardize length of school day by level. Susan, do you want to click through those? Sorry. The next one was to align bell times to national research regarding adolescent sleep patterns. Again, we achieved this by high school start time adjusted to eight-thirty. Design an efficient, affordable transportation routing system scheduled to align to the new length of day. Standardize professional learning time to occur outside the school day using a late start model. And then review and revise lunchtimes to provide students with a full twenty-five minutes to sit and eat. I want to talk about that just for a second. That has become more challenging than we anticipated. We have not met that goal. That is a goal we're still working on. A lot of our cafeterias are constrained by the size, so when we start thinking about buying that full twenty-five minutes to sit and eat, it expands our lunch period, so kids are eating as early as nine-thirty, in some cases, to two o'clock in the afternoon. So we're going to continue to work on that and bring that back to you, but we have not met that goal just yet. Okay, next slide. We use the following principles to guide our work: Develop a well-balanced day for students and staff. Consider the needs of elementary, middle, and high schools individually as a system. Propose transportation recommendations that were cost-neutral or result in a savings as much as possible. And tonight, we'll talk about a plan that was a cost-neutral plan that we are presenting. And then consider employee negotiated agreements in making those recommendations. And then consider employee negotiated agreements in making those recommendations. Robin, I'm going to turn it over to you to cover this slide.
Sure, thank you. So in our never-ending focus on working to do what's best for students in every school across BVSD, we know that to achieve this, there are some very specific actions that are fundamental to continuing our progress on this front. So as Rob Price just, um, talked about, first, a couple of years ago, we talked a lot about studies that indicated that our older students, our secondary students specifically, uh, need eight and a half to nine hours of sleep and to not wake up before six A M. if possible, in order to account for their circadian rhythms. And fortunately, we were able to address this by starting our high schools beginning at eight thirty A M. And that supports that information. Uh, next, what we do know is that both research and practice indicate that adding time to the school day and/or length of the school year can have a tremendously positive impact on student proficiency and, uh, future achievement in school and beyond. And we know by standardizing the length of the school day at the elementary level, uh, from six and a half hours in some cases in some schools, um, all the way to seven hours, we'll be able to achieve that as well. Um, and finally, we know that in BVSD, we are very proud of our educators. They're skilled, they're dedicated, and that level of expertise needs to be supported and maintained. It does not happen just magically. Um, so it's important for our educators to remain up to date uh, on the best practices and those best practices are inherent in our strategic plan. So as we continue to build upon the, the knowledge and skill base of our incredible educators, uh, and as we continue to implement the strategic plan, uh, educators need time, time dedicated to professional learning. And the equal school day provides a one hour time, a, a late start on Wednesdays, dedicated entirely to professional learning. And so this late start will be, as I said, dedicated to continuing to develop the knowledge and skill base of our teachers. And we've been talking about this work as we have been saying for several years. So seeing the equal school day work, uh, before you this evening is really exciting. And exciting to see not only the progress that we've been able to make so far, but the additional progress that we are on the brink of making uh, in the near future. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Rob.
All right, thank you, Robin. So as previously, previously mentioned, one of our goals was to provide, uh, to, was really to standardize the length of day at every level. So we've been able to achieve that at middle schools, K eights and high schools, middle schools were, uh, providing a seven hour day. Kates, we're providing a seven hour day. High schools, as you remember, were providing a seven hour fifteen minute day. As you can see at the elementary level, though, we are not providing that. Right now, our schools range from six and a half hours all the way to seven hours and twenty minutes in your elementary school. So the difference in that, if you just compare a six and a half hour day to a seven hour day, is eighty six and a half, eighty six hours of lost instruction time each year or thirteen point two days. You multiply that times a six or seven years, a student is in elementary school, they're missing a significant amount of time, and that's the inequities we've created in our own system that we're trying to solve now. So, um, as we're looking to make this, uh, adjustment to, for elementary schools to a seven hour day, all of our schools will still meet the minimum instructional hours. The elementary schools will actually have a thousand eighty three, uh, instruct, which greatly exceeds, uh, the elementary minimums. Um, you can also see at the middle Kates and high schools, they also exceed the instructional time required. So, uh, this chart here shows you a two-tier, um, bell time schedule, and I say two-tier because the way our transportation routing system works is buses go in, they pick up, uh, schools. Um, elementary students first, they drop off at elementary schools. Then they would pick up secondary students and drop off either at a middle school or a high school. The most efficient transportation system is a three-tier system. We've worked through a number of options and we weren't able to get there. So, uh, we landed on this option, uh, a seven forty five A M. to two forty five, uh, P M. Um, those are bell times. High schools would remain as the cornerstone of this model is at eight thirty A M. to three forty five P M. And then middle schools and Kates would be on another tier at eight forty to three forty. Uh, you can see on Wednesdays, as Robin presented a little bit ago, uh, professional learning time would occur on a late start model on Wednesdays. Uh, elementaries again would start an hour later, so eight forty five to two forty five. Uh, high schools and middle schools, the same. So some exceptions to this that I want to talk about, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and anybody's watching is on the same page. So Monarch Kates, Southern Hills, Brimfield High, no change in their bell time. And the reasons for that is the proximity of the K eight or middle school to their high school. Uh, we have to have separation to get traffic in and out at both the middle schools and Kates and their high schools. A Netherlands Elementary School will stay at a seven hour day and they will see no change in their bell times. Again, that is due to the way they're routed, uh, up there, they, uh, we've right now got them as a two-tiered system with their high school. Um, Gold Hill and Jamestown start times will not change, they will move to a seven hour day. A reminder that we do not provide transportation for Gold Hill and Jamestown. Flat Hards and Foothills will go from eight fifteen to three fifteen, you'll see they're not on a seven forty five tier. And the reason is, is because those buses right now go up into the foothills, pick up not only elementary but also secondary students and bring them down, and in order to do that and effectively cure those routes, we have to have an eight fifteen start time. Uh, BCSIS will be from eight to three, high peaks will be seven forty five to two forty five. Again, uh, we do not provide, uh, transportation to those two schools other than special education. But we do have to provide some separation in their bell times, just from, again, from a traffic standpoint, uh, to get cars in and out of that site. And then Boulder Tech's bell time will end at three twenty. So, uh, believe we've, um, I've covered that, so next slide here real quick. So I want to talk about this, just so you understand the information that is being presented here. Um, this slide shows the new, uh, A M. bus drop-off times for each school and the change in minutes from the current drop-off time. So you'll see, let's use Birch as an example. Um, Birch has a seven forty current bus drop-off time. They will be moved to seven thirty five, so we drop off ten minutes earlier than the bell time. And then our buses leave seven minutes after the final bell time. So Birch, for example, will only be changing five minutes. Uh, summer schools will start their days, uh, currently start their days before eight. Uh, those schools will see a small shift in the morning start time. Uh, most schools, as you'll see, uh, a change in start time of fifteen minutes or less. Two schools' start time will shift by twenty minutes. And four will see larger changes up to sixty minutes at Eisenhower Elementary. So the schools that are most impacted by this, if you look, uh, Bear Creek, uh, fifty minute change, Eisenhower, um, I believe Columbine is also on there, and Mesa Elementary. The majority of schools, though, see a twenty minute or less change. Next slide. I just want to let you know what has happened since we discussed this topic, um, last May. So late last year, we started to reach out directly to principals to discuss their change and hear any feedback that they had. I met with the principal advisory committee in November and the feedback was extremely supportive. Uh, transportation staff, specifically our safe routes of school staff, has met with principals of schools that are seeing the biggest schedule changes to understand what they think the challenges will be. Um, earlier this month, uh, Dr. Anderson and myself met with the district parent council to get their feedback. Really, our update tonight launches our information campaign to the community, as Randy mentioned, on Thursday at five o'clock. We have a let's talk forum, uh, where we'll be presenting the same information. Uh, the goal really, just as a reminder, the goal with the community, community communications plan is to share information with families and really to collect feedback on how we can support them with transition. So community processing will continue through February. We will collect that information, staff will evaluate that feedback. We will report to the board in April is the plan. So starting in May, then we'll start putting those transitional supports for families in place. Bus routes will then be finalized over the summer with the new bell schedule that we talked about earlier, starting in August. So as noted, um, the communications campaign will launch this week with information being shared to BVSD's existing communication channels. Information will be shared and updated as necessary through the start of the school year. And then with a renewed push over the summer to confirm or, uh, move or, or adjust with any of the changes that we get. So we realize, um, family schedules are built around the school day and everyone's schedule is unique. I'm trying to build a system that works individual or works for a whole, for our entire community. Um, we want to hear from the community about their anticipated challenges and their thoughts about the district and how we can support them. Uh, community schools, uh, Renee Williams and Bill Sutter, they're both eager to support the change with childcare and enrichment programs. We're already having those conversations. Uh, food service is already looking at how we can provide breakfast at more schools if that has helped for, for families uh, to get out of the house in the morning. Um, a letter will be going out to families and staff tomorrow to explain the change and invite them to provide F I A. feedback versus, uh, P R. or online forum. And then we will ask them also to submit questions to our let's, let's, uh, talk broadcast. So here are a couple of examples, um, of the questions that we will be asking. These are just high-level questions. Uh, question one, which BVSD childcare program will you, might you need or want before school on late start Wednesdays? And then with an earlier start time, you think your child will purchase breakfast? So, uh, more questions will be part of the survey, but we'll continue, uh, to do that outreach to support our families. So, um, other cost savings options we're, we're looking at with this equal school day. And understand, um, we're prioritizing our work, we got a lot to do already. Uh, some of this work, for example, um, the pilot with RTD, uh, that work has been put on hold this year due to the pandemic. And I'm not sure we're going to be ready to pilot that next year. So more to come on that, we'll continue to communicate with the board, uh, on that messaging on what we're doing. Um, consolidating stops in neighborhood, and again, the, the thought there is, is if we can reduce the time that kids spend on the buses, the better. So we're going to continue to look on that, look, look at consolidating some of those stops. Uh, we will communicate that to families if that's something we move forward with. Uh, reevaluate and walk distances, the school bus stops and ride times. Again, this is something that as time has become available or comes available, we'll continue to look into this as we move forward. And then evaluating load counts to identify opportunities to consolidate routes. That's really a cost savings measures. We do have some routes out there that are below fifty percent capacity. So how can we consolidate that with other bus routes? Uh, to try to save some money, and again, any money we save in transportation is less a transfer from the general fund. That is money that goes back into the classroom. We did roll out the opt-in program for bus service this year and it has been successful. Uh, we have ran into some, um, challenges for families, uh, that might not have internet access, uh, access. So we'll continue to figure out how better to support those families as we move forward. That is something that I want to continue doing in the twenty one, twenty two school year. And then other cost savings measures, uh, that we are committed to look at. For example, um, we've had a number of hazardous routes that were deemed hazardous, uh, years ago. Uh, now there's safe ways to get to school because of sidewalks, uh, crossing lights, um, et cetera. So we'll continue to look at those, and then there's, of course, other alternative transportation options. This piece right here is secondary to what we're really trying to do, and I want everybody to understand this. What we have presented tonight is a cost neutral solution, and that's what we committed to the board was bringing either a cost neutral solution or some cost savings. We want to continue to dig into this, these are options that we will look into. So, uh, that concludes our presentation, and with that, we will open it up for discussion.
All right, thank you so much. Um, let's start with Richard again.
Thanks, uh, Robin. That's a lot of information to digest, you know, it's, uh, uh, a little bit overwhelming for me right now. Uh, I'm looking at the, uh, the guiding principles and, and, and the real purpose of this is, uh, design more to have an efficient and affordable transportation routing system. It seems like, you know, the way you were explaining it. Uh, and I'm wondering what the, uh, increased school day time will do for student achievement, for children and, and, and that. I know that it increases the number of minutes that kids are going to be in school, obviously. Uh, but does it really help? Will it really help the kids learn better? Uh, if, uh, if they have to be at school earlier and all of that. And, and, uh, and the reason I'm raising those particular concerns is that, uh, reading the emails, you know, there's been a lot of emails that we've been receiving because of the equal school day. Um, and I believe that, uh, of all the emails that I've received and I've read, all of them are against it, except for maybe one particular email. Um, for a number of reasons. And, uh, and, uh, uh, in looking at who was in the committee, uh, I didn't see a lot of, I didn't see any parents that were in that particular committee unless, uh, the principals advisory committees were uh, populated by parents also. And that's where the parental input was coming from. Uh, so, you know, just, just to say that, uh, I guess the concern that I have is, is, uh, uh, I see, uh, at this point, I see a lack of community parental involvement in designing this equal school day process. Uh, so, uh, is there going to be an opportunity or time for people to actually input? I mean, parents to actually, you mentioned that earlier, but is there going to be a time for them to actually input? And is that going to change anything or are we all set and this is the way it's going to go?
Yeah, Robin, will you talk a little bit? Uh, Samara did a wonderful job, and I know I've talked to several principals that have done a wonderful job. What could they do with another twenty minutes or thirty minutes of a school day? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, thanks, Rob, I'm happy to. So what we hear consistently from many educators is that there's just not enough time in the school day to do everything that we know kids need. So we do what we've always done. But what we all, what we also want to do during the school day is make sure that we address not only core subjects, but we also have to make sure that we are addressing, uh, social emotional needs. We have talked a lot in previous years about the need for a, uh, a sufficient lunchtime and, uh, exercise and recess time. We also know that we need ample time for either intervention or extension for students academically in order to meet their individual needs. If they are struggling and need time to catch up, we know that they need more time. If they are students who need extension and greater depth, uh, of contact to content, that also needs, um, additional time. Uh, we also value in our community the ability for all students at every level to engage in specials, to have the opportunity to have art, music and P E. And part of what we were able to accomplish with the original ideal school day work, uh, if we recall, is the A B C special schedule, which was able to take art, music and, and P E all to the same number of minutes, valuing each of those students. Uh, and so really, it's a comprehensive approach, knowing that kids need more. A complete education that focuses not only on academic excellence, but also supporting the needs of the entire child, including, uh, community and social emotional learning takes more time than what we usually feel that we have during the day. And so this really addresses that, and the truth is, some of our students in our district already get that. They already have a seven hour day or even longer. And so the core of this conversation really grew out of the fact that, wow, some students in our district have that already. And other students in our district, based on the mere fact of which school they happen to go to, don't have the same opportunities in terms of amount of learning, uh, each day, each month, each year, and then over the course. each month, each year, and then over the course of their K5 experience. You know, if we think about 13 days, a possible 13 days per year, times six years, K through five, that's, you know, what, nearly a third of a school year differential. And so part of the goal is to make sure that every school, every child has the same opportunity for the same excellent opportunities across the system. So that really was where the idea originally came from. Hopefully that clarifies.
Robin, thank you. And Richard, I want to talk a little bit. We looked at a number of options as we were working through with the committee and, you know, one option had the students getting out of school much later. And you know, the thing that struck me was, are leaders doing this work? Who talked about how learning drops off significantly after two o'clock in the afternoon? And that's why everyone supported is, you know, these young learners are vibrant in the morning. And then the later the day goes on, it, they drop off significantly. And I, and I know that this is a huge change for six of our schools, specifically four, if you, if you really dial it in. But when you look at the schools and our start times right now, we have a lot of schools that are right around at the start time that we're talking about. So although this seems significant for those schools, you know, I will say, you know, we look back, I look back personally to the high school bell time change. And man, that was tough to do, but what a benefit we've provided those high school students. And I think over the six or seven years for an elementary student to get these additional instructional minutes, I can't think of more important work that I've been a part of. So not sure I've answered all your questions. And then I guess on the parent feedback, the engagement that we plan over the next two months, that's what we want. We're not asking for engagement on the actual times. We're asking for engagement on how we can support them. Is that through school age care? Is that by providing breakfast? Is that after school programming to help those families that might not be getting off work at 2:45 in the afternoon, et cetera? It's putting those things in place that we can support our families as we're moving forward.
No, I hear you, Rob, and thank you for that. I, you know, I'm looking at your slide seven, I think it is, when we're talking about the current status in elementary schools. There's Pioneer, Sanchez and Nederlander at seven hours or longer. Is that the only three schools that are seven hours or longer? You know, I'm not sure in terms of the elementary schools.
That sounds about right, Richard. I would, I need to dig into that to make sure, but I believe that is correct.
So, you know, there's only three elementary schools that are seven hours or longer and now we're going to equal date. Now all the schools will have seven hours.
That's correct. Yep, except for high schools, seven hours and 15 minutes. You know, that one of our principals had commented that, you know, a lot of times without a seven hour day, this was a principal, and I know he won't mind if I say his name, Brent Caldwell, principal of Metal Arc, who was the principal at Heatherwood, who had a seven and a half hour day. And he had commented, the first thing that drops is social emotional learning because the state dictates everything else that falls into the school day. And I would think after going through this pandemic, we would all on this call prioritize social emotional learning over a lot right now. And in order to get there, instructional minutes are going to be required.
Yeah, and you know, and reading some of the arguments that I've been reading is that a lot of the social emotional stuff actually takes place at home before kids go off. If they're given the time allotted to be able to eat breakfast with the adults with the kids and stuff like that and send them, send them to school, you know, and that's where a lot of that is occurring. I'm not arguing against the equal school day. I'm just making, raising some points, you know, that I think we should, we need to consider as we, as we move on this a little bit further. The, and then if I look at some of the schools that are on, on, on seven hour days already, I mean, I mean, the schools that, that are receiving seven hours of instruction a day, you know, we're, we're still struggling and we're still trying to help them out a little bit more and stuff like that. So, but at any rate, I, I just thought I'd raise the points because I think it's needed for, you know, our community at large, people that are listening, understand that, you know, what, what is the real reason why we want to do this equal school day?
I want to make sure that that is very apparent. This is not about saving the district money. This is not about finding transportation efficiencies. One of the goals was, we were going to bring you a plan that would be cost neutral and provide equal learning time. And if I remember correctly and digging through the archives, the reason the ideal school day didn't move forward back in 2016 was because of transportation costs. So I just want to make that very clear that we have worked extremely hard. We use the 8:30 start time as the cornerstone for high schools. So after we received public feedback, et cetera, you know, we originally came to the board and we said, high school should start at nine, working our way back, once we got public feedback, due to athletics and activities and other things, we went back to an 8:30. And that 8:30 bell time is what is driving this elementary start time. But again, based on the research that we've done, the research isn't telling us otherwise that 7:45 is too early.
Well, I'm in total agreement that we have students that we, that need and we should be able to provide for them more instructional time, not less, but more instructional time. I'm completely a hundred percent in agreement with that. And, but then there are schools that don't require that. I mean, there, there are, there are children that are perfectly well the way they are, you know? So I guess that's, you know, I'm trying to figure out how do you, how do you reach a balance in terms of what we're trying to do so that we can keep everybody happy?
Richard, if I may, I appreciate the comments certainly. Just a couple of thoughts. Number one, as we start to engage our community, just like we, you know, and I anticipate a similar path to when we did this for high schools, right? We are going to hear things. We've already heard things from our community members that we know that we have to mitigate for. For example, I know that there are some folks that when they, when they filled out open enrollment, and we think that there's about 40 or so families where this is the impact, where they may have opened enroll because of the start times. But we need to, we need to work that out. And, and we've already started to work on that. But I would argue and share with this board, there isn't a school in this district that doesn't have achievement gaps and doesn't have kids who need more instructional minutes. I, I mean, there are gaps in all of our schools, right? So to, and, and it's not just instructional time. And I think you've hit on this point, Richard, it's what you do with it. I feel that this work certainly complements the work that is, that is planned for the strategic plan that you'll be hearing more about here within the next couple of weeks in regards to how we roll out scope and sequence instructional models, MTSS programs, formative assessments, those things. As we come and try to recover from pandemic, what are the systemic things that we need to do as a school district to make sure that each and every kid, regardless of what happened this past year, gets a fair shake and gets the opportunities to relearn? So it's not just instructional minutes. I do think that this is, this is work that we want to honor and continue to honor, and it does fit in nicely with the work that we have planned. But, but certainly we know that, that we have to listen and we have to figure out if there are things that we need to mitigate for, you know, how do we do that? And that's what our team is, is planning to do.
I, I hear you, Rob. And I, I'm bringing it up because I was around when the ideal school day was being introduced and stuff. And I, and I recall, I recall very vividly the pushback that we got, you know, with the ideal school day. And, and I think a lot of that had to do with the fact that we weren't very transparent with our community. So that's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Is that it? Richard, can I move on? Awesome. Okay. Kathy?
So I just have a couple of quick questions. I just want to clarify that what was written as the headline in the camera is not where we are. We are probably going to go forward with this because as you said, you don't need a board vote, but we have lots of steps until we get there. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, absolutely, Kathy. I think that as we start to engage, if there, if there are some unforeseen circumstance or issues that we feel is a, is a showstopper, we, we don't see that today, but certainly we would bring that back to the board. You know, this is not a, we've decided this and we're just telling you about it. We, we are following the path and the direction that we've been on for this seven year journey, right? And now some time and opportunity to, to listen to hear, what are the things that we could do to mitigate the concerns out there? Because, you know, there, there are pros and cons in anything you do, but the benefits of, of almost, you know, you know, 80 to 90 instructional hours and, and the 36 hours of professional development that, that we'll be able to guarantee for all of our teachers in our district is K5. I mean, I think that those are certainly huge benefits. So, but, but this isn't a, hey, board, this is what we've decided to do. And, and board members, you all know this, that we always work as a team. We try to check in with you along the way, feel like that we have been given the direction to move here and feel like that it complements the rest of our work incredibly well.
So it reminds me of the whole movement about five to eight years ago called more and better learning time. Do you remember that? And it was like, you know, you can't just add time. It was what you did with the time and it sounds like you have a plan for that. So it's cost neutral? Is that what you're saying, Rob? That we can do all this and we can add all the childcare that everybody needs, before and after school care and all that, and it's cost neutral? That, I find that a little bit of a stretch, but maybe it's.
No, 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 no. And I, and maybe I'm overselling that a little bit, Kathy. We don't know what the needs of our families are. So no, those costs are not included in this. When we look at what the increase of parent costs will be compared to this little bit of savings we'll see in transportation within our departments, that we're, that's what we're looking at. What we need to understand from families though, is what do they need to be put in place to help them? So those costs, childcare costs, et cetera, are not in this plan. And that's what we need to hear and collect that feedback and plan accordingly.
So it's too soon to say that we could make a commitment to be able to address all those needs till we know what they are?
Fair statement, yes.
Sorry, is that the puppy in the background? Then we did get an email that, I guess I hadn't focused until tonight, that you wanted to do this late start for every school? But I don't know if you saw the email that Fairview has already incorporated their own professional development and this would mess up their block schedule and all of their planning that they put in place. So I would hope that we wouldn't necessarily make it one size fits all when it comes to the professional learning time. Is there flexibility to look at that?
It would be a one hour late start and, you know, principal of Fairview was on our working committee. He was part of that recommendation as, as was BBEA was part of that recommendation. So principals know that's coming, but that would be our plan is that would be a district wide, one hour late start for all schools.
So what I'm hearing is no, there's no flexibility?
No, but when you start making these changes within schools, and that's what the challenge is, it throws off our transportation. So if one school says, I'm not going to do it, but another does, then they're not on that tier. Therefore, transportation costs go up significantly. If you think about it, a bus that's driving down the road, every one of those buses costs $83,000 on average a year. So when I throw them off a tier, I've got to put another bus. And right now I'm 59 drivers short. So if you know of anybody that wants to drive a bus, please let me know. But even if you said, I'm going to give you more money to let this school do this, I can't hire the drivers right now, Kathy.
Well, I would just encourage you to, to think about being a little flexible. I get what you just said, but I thought that the email that we got was very well thought out and maybe the principal signed on, but I don't know if the principal signed on and then agreed to this new plan. So I'm just encouraging you to think flexibly.
Here's what I say.
One size fits all for everybody.
We're, we're going to let, we're going to certainly listen, right? And to the extent that there, there are folks that want to, that, that's what this part is about, we'll listen, right? I think what Rob is sharing is that, you know, you can't have a, you know, some of these things, when you scale, right? There's certain trade offs that you have to make and those are just things that we'll have to consider, but certainly we'll listen. I've received some of those emails as well, so we'll dig in some of those issues.
And I have a question I should have asked earlier. Are high schools going to be able to go back to doing more activities like choir and those kinds of things in a couple of weeks? Or where are we on, on that? Cause you said activities were coming back. Is that part of the plan?
Yep. Now, every school should have a plan for that. And I believe that, that, that some of that started this week because certainly give you all more information, but schools are certainly working. I know my daughter has got, has gone back and is doing some things at the high school level. So yes, those things are starting to, to begin to pop up.
It would be great in a couple of weeks, Rob, just to get an update on all the things that we're bringing back, because I think that's important for people to know.
We can do that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opening it up to listen to us and, and, you know, 86 hours is a lot of time that we could be helping our students get caught up. So I'm excited about that part.
And multiply that by six.
Yeah, no, I know. So it's just figuring out these, if we can afford it and meeting all of our community's needs will be a balancing act going forward. Thanks.
Okay. Donna?
Yeah, I want to thank all the work that's gone into this. Thank everybody for putting it in. But I, I, I understand all the parent concerns and having read all the emails, I, I do think we have to involve the parent community. I, I started thinking about this as I read the emails, looking back even eight years, talking about the, the best school day for kids and, and how it's progressed. But, but I think a lot of parents right now, they're, they're in the middle of COVID fatigue and Zoom fatigue and every other kind of fatigue you can put in there. And, and then this just could be the straw that breaks the camel's back as far as that they, they want to have the input. And having taught in the classroom for more than 30 years, quantity versus quality. I, I do see the importance of giving our kids more time, but sometimes the little kids, they get tired at the end of seven hours and, and seven hours is a lot for them. I know we're going to have a lot of catch up to do, but I, I think we've also got to talk about that quality part versus quantity. And, and sometimes it, it may be as, some things that we need to change like class sizes. The instructional time doesn't have to be as extensive if sometimes we can have those smaller groups and smaller sizes. There's a lot to consider here and especially the, those parents that are concerned about the daycare costs of finding someone to get their kids to school and then having to change it on a Wednesday schedule. I, I hear, I, I just want, I've told so many parents, tune in tonight and watch because they'll have more updates, more answers. But I think tonight is, is not just more answers. It, it's more for parents to think about and put those questions forward and their concerns forward. I don't have any questions, but that's what I needed to say. Thanks.
Okay. Kitty?
I really appreciate you sharing the research on, you know, kids learning, young kids learning dropping off after two o'clock. I think that's important to keep in mind. And I really like that the kids are going to, every child will have a seven hour day, which I think is also important. But I also understand the concerns of parents. You know, anytime you drop some kind of change on them like this, it can be very upsetting, you know, like we're talking about schedules of taking kids to school and picking kids up. And I understand all of that. But I do think we need to look at what's in the best interests of the education of our students too. So thank you for all the work you've put in on it. I do think we need to consult with and listen to our parents, but I think we need to, once we've figured out what's the, going to be best for kids, that we go ahead and do that.
Okay.
I would have loved this if this had happened 30 some years ago, because I had a kid who got up with the chickens and didn't go to school till 8:45 and she was practically ready for lunch. So.
Okay, Lisa.
Thanks. So I, I think I want to start by acknowledging that for some families, this alleviates burdens related to before school care, but for other families, this is really adding additional obstacles. As a parent at the school experiencing the single biggest change, we're moving by an hour. Personally, I, I'm not excited to pop this. This is going to be really difficult for my family. I think having said that, I do tend to think that this, after an adjustment period, this is in the best interest of the district and of each individual school. And I think the first year will be tough. I think maybe halfway through and by the second year, it'll, it'll start to, start to normalize. I'm glad we'll be finding ways to engage and to get feedback over the next week. I think it's clear that people feel like they haven't had an opportunity to express concerns and to engage. Rob Price, I think part of what I'm hearing is that it's difficult to really appreciate the challenges and logistics involved with making sure all of the pieces of our district puzzle fit together. So I, I'm wondering if we're thinking about the way that these changes So I, I'm wondering if we're thinking about the way that these changes impact not just our school schedule, but also after-school activities and sports and lunchtimes and so on? With, you know, sort of keeping that all in mind, could you maybe speak a little bit to, to folks who are saying, why can't it just be fifteen minutes later or twenty minutes later, or whatever the case is at elementary school, and, and what that impact really looks like?
Yeah, it's, it really, when you think about it, when a school bus drops off at a particular school, we have to have about forty-five minutes on average for the time we drop to get to the next school, and that's to pick up students along at each stop and then to drop. So in order to run a tier, if you think about a school that would start at seven forty-five, we're dropping at seven thirty-five, so about forty-five minutes before that, we're picking up those first, first students. So every, anytime you make a shift, so if you were to say, okay, let's go elementary preschool, we want them to start at eight o'clock and go eight to three o'clock, everything has to shift by that same amount. So high schools would have to go at eight forty-five to four o'clock, and that is not a recommendation I would be willing to make, just based on what we've learned at the high school level. And then middle schools and, and K eights would have to make the same adjustment, and it's because of the, really, the number of elementary schools on that first tier compared to the number of middle schools and high schools we have in the district. But it's that forty-five minutes logistically that we have to get from school to school that creates those tierings, and you really, again, we want that same, that one bus to be able to serve multiple schools to be as efficient as we possibly can.
Okay. And I think one, one concern I'm hearing a lot from folks at my school is how this impacts green routes to school and ability to walk and bike in the morning in the winter. If you've been to schedule, and I'm hearing online, that lots of folks are pretty accustomed to the schedule that, that all of us will be moving to, and clearly are finding ways to around those, around those challenges. And I'm wondering if you have any suggestions or ideas or, you know, tips, explanations for ways that folks who are suddenly experiencing a drastic change in start time and, and, you know, imagining what that looks like in the winter, what can we do to make sure we're not all having to drive in every morning?
Yeah, and I, I want to say that I've gotten a lot of the same feedback that probably the board has received, but I've also gotten feedback from working parents that two parents that have to be at, at work at eight o'clock, this is well-received right now. But in, in regards to your question specifically, Lisa, you know, I think of the three-block challenge, for example, where parents can drive, they park three blocks away, and they can walk their students to school because they're parking earlier, or they're getting to school earlier, and they still have to get to work. There's still a lot of opportunities for families to, might have to drive, might have to get a little, a little bit earlier to get their kids there. We have more daylight at the end of the day to safely go and get their kids to school. So, you know, there, I think there's plenty of options that are safe routes to schools, team's going to be working on, they've already started working on this. If you remember, I talked about that three-block challenge, that's something we rolled out earlier in the year. So I still think there's a lot of opportunities for families to be outside, not have to drive to work, not have to be on a bus, et cetera. And we'll continue to look at those over the next couple of months and roll out a plan for families in May, if this is how we move forward.
Thank you so much. Well, I, I think the seven-hour school day makes a lot of sense. I understand the reasons we're shifting to a shared start time across elementary schools. I think it's clear that we have a lot more work to do with our community to make sure that they're on board with us, and, and I appreciate everything you shared tonight.
Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, I do have a few things. One is, and maybe Robin can speak to this, is, so not only are students in school a differing amount of hours, but teachers are too. So teachers on the same contract have a different school day. That is correct, right? And so it would seem to me that this would, this would also be equitable for them.
So you are right that every, every teacher has the same contract as determined by the negotiated agreement. So you are right, there are currently differing amounts of times that teachers in different, in different schools do teach. That is true.
Thank you. And there's two other short things. One is, I am really thrilled to see this coming to fruition. As a member of District Parent Council, for many, many years, we've discussed this at least four times over the years that I can remember, and then you were there again last night, or whenever they had their last meeting. So I'm glad to see it moving forward. And then I'll just share a story. So my son went to Crestview, and during, it was an eight o'clock start, and during the flood, Crestview was closed for an extended period of time, longer than any other school, and they had to make up the time. So they opened ten minutes earlier for the rest of the school year, and the staff decided to keep it that way because they liked it so much. So they, they only have to, they're going to, you know, five more minutes, they'll be opening up. But my point is that that extra ten minutes was a huge deal to them, and they liked it so much that they stayed with it. They have a seven fifty start ever since the flood. So I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, like Stacy, I've been hearing about this equal school day for a very, very long time, and thanks for all your work putting into it. I think all the questions I had were answered. Thank you for not trying to get rid of fifth grade instrumental music right now, also. That was a nightmare. Okay, any other questions or final thoughts before we move on to the next item? No? Okay, great. So we have a legislative update, although we just went through the supplemental. Does anyone have anything else to add? No? Okay, that kind of was the legislative update. So our next item are action items, and I'll read the list from consent grouping. Seven point one, personnel items. Seven point two, approval of minutes, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one executive session. Seven point three, approval of minutes, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one special meeting. Seven point four, approval of minutes, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. Seven point five, approval of minutes, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one special meeting. Seven point six, twenty twenty twenty-one revised budget. Seven point seven, acceptance of donation, New Vista High School. Seven point eight, career and technical education concurrent enrollment, Colorado Department of Education, twenty-one. Seven point nine, identity and access management system class length. Seven point ten, grant information technology, state connecting Colorado students grant, Colorado Department of Education, twenty-one. All right, are there any items a board member would like to pull? Not seeing or hearing anything. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Kitty, seconded by Kathy. All right, Laura, would you, oh, does anyone have any questions? Okay, Laura, do you mind calling the roll? Garcia?
Yes.
Jeff Hart?
Yes.
Mark Whit?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Celine Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, and then we're up to our last item, which are two policy action items. These are policies that we reviewed at our last meeting. The first is nine point one, adoption of the board policy, KF, Community Use of Facilities and Notice of KFR. And the second is nine point, oh, I think we'll do it, are these, is this a group? Oh, it is a group. Nine point two, adoption of board policy, KFB, Operation of Childcare and Enrichment Programs, and Notice of KFB, R, the regulation. So first, before we start discussion, we need a motion to approve by Kitty, seconded by Stacy. All right, so any items that anyone would like to pull? Or we can go into discussion? Should we go into discussion? Yes? Okay. Questions on the revisions that Kathleen made since our last meeting?
No, I, I just want to thank Kathleen for some of the clarifying language that she put in on category two, category three, category four, and category five.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so hearing none, shall we call a roll to adopt policies, KF and KFB with their associated regulations?
So move.
Garcia?
Yes.
Jeff Hart?
Yes.
Mark Whit?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant? Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, so our final item is agenda setting. Any pressing concerns that, I guess we would add to a list for the next prioritization meeting at this point? You can also accomplish that by sending an email to Laura or Rob, so you don't have to.
So just, just a question, Tina, that motion included both, we don't have to vote on the regulation, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But policy does say we need to be made aware.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to remind everyone. All right, nothing on agenda setting? All right, great, so thanks so much, and thanks for all those of you who joined us remotely. This meeting is adjourned.